July seventeenth, we have six members of council present. Councilmember Bloom is on her way. First item up permitted, the discussion of the citywide survey or don't know why to analyze.
Let me, let me just introduce, as the council has funded last couple of years, we, we do a survey of Warren Hallmark in the council offices, the project lead on it. And once again, we went to contract with White to Analytics. Kyrie Gibson is here, representing, she's a partner, vice president of research. And we sent the top line report to you a week and a half or so ago. Also been spoken of with the department heads. So we'll just turn the time over to Kyrie to go through the results.
Fantastic. Well, thanks for giving me some time this evening, folks. We're excited to share the results of the survey this year. I think one of the valuable things that we'll start to see with this year's survey is just that change over time as you repeat the same questions, as we repeat the methodology. Being able to sort of trend which direction residents' opinion is going is the most exciting thing about surveys like this. So we have some single year-over-year comparisons to start with. But overall, starting with our high-level quality of life metrics, we're looking pretty consistent to twenty twenty-three. We have a seventy-six out of one hundred for residents' overall quality of life rating. That's quite positive. We're not seeing a lot of variation from one council district to the next. So pretty consistent, relatively high quality of life ratings overall. We have about forty-one percent of residents who say that they feel the city is currently headed in the right direction. The next most common response is not that the city is headed in the wrong direction, but the residents just don't know or are unsure. So we do see more, a larger share of the population this year engaged, expressing an opinion. Not any movement actually in the share of residents who feel the city is headed in the wrong direction. So mostly it's just people becoming a little bit more plugged in over time, and we are seeing that vote of confidence tick up. When we ask residents a series of questions about the rate of growth in West Jordan, one of the things that continues to be unique about this particular spot in the valley is that residents don't seem to be overly agitated by the growth. We have a large share of residents, nearly seventy percent, who say that they feel the city is growing at an appropriate, or the city is better today than it was five years ago. And most residents feel the city is growing at an appropriate pace. And we have overall positive ratings for the economic development opportunities and commercial opportunities in the city. And we see a good share of residents who, who feel satisfied with the services and amenities that are available to them in West Jordan. When we look at some of the things that residents have expressed concerns about or that they see as key issues facing West Jordan, there are some concerns about how the growth in the region and in the city will continue to impact infrastructure in West Jordan. And I'm thinking about the traffic concern, some of the, the growing pains that residents might be experiencing. When, and again, that's pretty consistent with what we heard last year. When we look specifically at city services, at the top of the list, receiving the highest satisfaction ratings, we have fire and emergency medical services, garbage collection and drinking water. Again, pretty consistent with what we saw in twenty twenty-three. And when we ask residents if there are any services that they would like to see offered in West Jordan that aren't currently available to them, we don't have a lot of consensus around one area where there is an obvious gap in city services. So overall, residents feel that the city is doing well managing and providing those city services. But there is, when given the opportunity to ask for what more could we be doing, just some emphasis on continuing to improve the level of city services or the accessibility of city services. And then finally, we asked a couple of questions in this year's survey about whether the city should provision for and fund a city cemetery in the future when the current law is at capacity. And we do have a plurality, so not a majority of residents, who say that they would support the city funding that investment with tax dollars. But it is the most common response overall. So we'll look at the distribution there. Perhaps not surprisingly, those folks who are most likely to oppose the funding of a city cemetery in the future are the folks who are most likely to consider themselves not in need of it. We have our eighteen to forty-four-year-old resident cohort expressing the least interest in that particular investment. And then our higher-income residents are more reluctant to support future investment in a new city cemetery. This is just a quick look at the survey methodology and geographic distribution of our responses to the survey. You can see we have good representation from all four of the city's council districts. We supplemented the panel this year with new move-ins from the utilities database. In total, we had one thousand five hundred twenty-seven residents respond to the survey. Again, frankly, this is statistical overkill, but it does give us a lot of opportunity to dig in at the council district level, still with some statistical validity there and a reasonable margin of error within districts. So for the survey as a whole, anytime we're looking at citywide responses, our margin of error is about two point five percentage points. When we're looking at differences at the district's level, that margin of error is closer to five percentage points. Looking at overall quality of life ratings in a little bit more depth, I alluded to this already, but you can see there's a lot of consistency in the quality of life distributions from one council district to the next. We have an average rating of seventy-five or seventy-six on that zero-to-one-hundred scale, citywide and within each council district.
And District One stepped it up. Come on, guys. You don't think thirteen hundred West has anything to do with it?
It's a statistical tie. Don't worry. Looking at some of those shifts over time, the largest difference we observed is actually from District Two, where we've seen satisfaction ratings with quality of life overall go from a seventy-two point six to a seventy-two or seventy-five point five on average. So an increase of just shy of three percentage points. All of this pretty consistent across the board here. No major jumps up or down. So good news there.
So District One was mad about thirteen West. You can see that, right? Biggest drop.
But when we ask residents what they like most about living in West Jordan, the common themes continue to hinge around the convenience and accessibility of the city. It's close to a lot of the things that residents want to do for work or play. It is a really conveniently located place in the valley. Residents feel like there's still a sense of community. There are good neighborhoods and, and positive interactions with their neighbors here. And the city overall is well-maintained, that there, the aesthetic, the appearance of the city is quite positive on the whole. When we ask residents whether they feel the city is headed in the right direction or the wrong direction, you can see, again, forty-one percent of residents say the city is headed in the right direction, but our largest share of residents are expressing some uncertainty or indicating a level of disengagement or unawareness of how the city is currently trending. So that number is slightly improved from twenty twenty-three, though. We have about a five percentage point shift in the share of residents who are declining to express an opinion, and that corresponds to a direct increase in the share of residents who feel the city is headed in the right direction. So the more engaged residents are, the more they know, the more likely they are to feel that the city is headed in the right direction overall. Looking at residents' feelings about the city today compared to five years ago, insane amount of consistency here. It's rare that we see almost identical numbers year over year. I had to double-check to make sure that this wasn't an accidental replication of the same data. But we do have, again, about sixty-eight percent of residents who say that the city has gotten better or is about the same as it was five years ago. Among that roughly nineteen percent of residents who feel that the city is headed in the wrong direction or things have gotten some degree worse, the concerns that residents are expressing really hinge around growing pains. So increase in traffic congestion, concerns about housing prices, overall population growth and how that strains the city's infrastructure are the, again, the major themes.
Nice question on that.
Yes, please.
Are you ensuring that there's different respondents each year?
So some of those respondents are going to be the same because we did intentionally recruit a resident panel, which lowers our sampling costs over time, but offers some savings to the city in that process. So some of them are repeatedly sampled. That said, again, we supplemented this year's survey data collection with new move-in responses from the utilities database and a new supplemental renter sample from our third-party address vendor.
So is the survey sample random?
Yes, we randomly selected households throughout the city. Looking at some of residents' high-level attitudes towards the city, we have a large majority of residents who feel that West Jordan is a great place to raise a family. They feel safe living in West Jordan. Most residents agree that the city has enough parks, open spaces and recreation areas to meet their needs overall. The one area where we see an uptick in ambivalence, we're still at a majority of residents who feel a sense of community with other West Jordan residents, but that twenty-eight percent is our largest neither-agree nor disagree response across, again, some of these high-level attributes of the city. So definitely still some room to increase the sense of community that residents feel. And all of these data points are quite consistent with what we saw last year, though there is a, on the cusp of statistical significance uptick in the share of residents who feel that the city is a great place to raise a family when compared to last year's data. We asked some questions about the economic opportunities and city services in West Jordan as well. You can see, majority of residents, about two-thirds, feel that the city has all the kinds of retail opportunities that they're looking for, provides the type of services and amenities that they would like to see, that the city does a good job managing city services, and that the city is growing and developing in a positive way. When we ask residents whether there are job opportunities in West Jordan for people like them, again, we see a significantly larger neutral response here. Now, part of that is the share of residents who have entered retirement age and aren't necessarily looking for job opportunities. But even looking at some of our younger age cohorts, we have a large share of residents who are expressing some ambivalence there. This is really common in communities that are traditionally suburban, that are a little bit more removed from those commercial centers. Residents aren't necessarily, especially along the Wasatch Front, aren't necessarily looking to work in the same place where they live and play. So nothing to be concerned about there. Just a unique feature, or maybe not so unique, but a feature of many communities along the Wasatch Front. And when we look at shifts in opinion in each of these statements, the one area that has statistically ticked up, I guess there are two. The, the city provides all of the services residents are looking for. We have a seven percentage point increase there compared to twenty twenty-three, and a five percentage point increase in the share of residents who say that the city is growing and developing in a positive way. So again, positive sentiments overall around growth. A little bit hard to come by in the Salt Lake Valley right now, as you might imagine. So this is something that is pretty unique to West Jordan compared to other communities. Now, looking at residents' interactions or satisfaction levels with specific city services and fire and emergency medical at the top of the list here with an eighty-two out of a hundred satisfaction rating. Garbage collection and recycling receives a seventy-eight out of one hundred, and culinary or drinking water as a seventy-six out of one hundred. So rounding out our top three satisfaction ratings there. But overall, high levels of satisfaction with all city services. The only areas where we start to approach the midpoint of the scale, suggesting maybe some areas for potential improvement or better communication with residents. Surface maintenance on city streets and roads, we've had a couple allusions to specific streets already. Planning, zoning and building services. I think I mentioned this last year, but planning tends to be the department that bears the brunt of negative attitudes about growth and development.
Nice job, Scott.
Unlikely that most of the residents offering lower ratings there have actually interacted with the planning department. You just get to be the scapegoat. So I apologize. Public opinion can be cruel. And then code enforcement here at a fifty-six out of a hundred satisfaction rating. This is one area where some of residents' specific comments pointed to concerns about how their neighbors may or may not upkeep their property, parking concerns, things like that with, along city streets in residential areas where residents might have a few complaints.
I'd be curious, I don't know if you can dig down this deep, but on code enforcement, can you see east side versus west side? Is west side more concerned about code enforcement or east side?
We have council district breakouts to speak to that. I love a segue. Thank you.
Talk it off, Chad. How much did she pay you?
You can see our highest rating overall for code enforcement comes from District Two residents. Our residents in District One are at about a fifty-six on that satisfaction rating scale. Our residents in District Four are at a fifty-one, I believe. So the lowest rating comes, or fifty-two, I can't remember, but comes there. So that's where our, our levels of concern are most centralized. But overall, relative consistency here from one council district to the next. The only statistically significant difference would be between residents in District Two and residents in District Four's opinions.
Well, this is good. I was just curious. It was higher than most of the west sides newer, but four and three are showing about the same.
Yeah, a little bit of a mixed bag.
I have a, I have a question.
Yes.
Says that in District Four, people are less satisfied with code enforcement and building services. Could you talk about, well, just talk about the fine print up there then?
Yeah, so our overall lowest satisfaction ratings for building services and code enforcement come from our District Four residents. Again, that's a fifty for building services and a, I believe, a fifty-two for code enforcement. So relatively lower ratings there. Again, the only statistically significant differences between council districts, come from those opinions expressed from District Four residents and those in Districts Two and Three, depending on which metric we're looking at there.
Could I ask a little deeper question on code enforcement? It's kind of a two-edged sword, because you might have somebody who's really upset with code enforcement because they actually had code enforcement called.
Who's stringent versus not stringent enough.
Somebody else who's upset with code enforcement because there's not enough. They're not, they're not doing enough.
Yep.
And so is there a way to parse that?
We have comments on both sides of the coin here. So I don't know that there's a way to necessarily solve that problem. There are residents who are frustrated with the level of intervention on their own properties, and there are residents who are frustrated with a lack of intervention on their neighbor's properties. So it's.
I would, for future surveys, I would love to see that a little more parsed out. So we could say, hey, how do you feel about the level of code enforcement as far as infractions go? How do you feel about if you've had to interact with the code enforcement officer regarding an infraction? How was, how was that going for you? And I don't know, it'd be interesting to see.
I, I was going to go down that same road, is that code enforcement has hit rock bottom twice now. Sorry, Brian, you're squarely squeaking by, you know? We're putting down enough asphalt that you can beat up. Yeah, but what I'm wondering is, since we can see these bottom three or four, the, the question would be, are you upset with code enforcement because they're too strict? Are you upset with code enforcement because they're too loose? It could, I'm wondering if that question could be broken out in the future. The other one that I'm, I, I mean, I know, I, I know why sidewalk maintenance is the way it is. The one that I'm more interested in, at least for me, is why are, why is the satisfaction with trails so low?
That is a great question, and that is actually an area where we have a statistically significant difference compared to twenty twenty-three's data. This is the only statistically significant decrease in overall service satisfaction ratings. Frankly, there wasn't a clear indicator from the open-ended responses that residents offered about city services as, that would point to that shift in opinion. So the question becomes, are residents concerned about trail maintenance? Is this something where they feel there aren't enough trail access points? In this particular survey, we didn't have follow-up questions specifically related to trails in West Jordan. That is something that we could explore in future surveys if that's of interest.
It was a comment, it's a whole lot even. Talk about trails, certainly, on all of the counts.
Here's, I'm going to interject here. Here's where I'm coming from. And, and we've got some of the data, and my question is, so what? We used, we, we, we used the survey last year and we put a couple of these things from the survey on the budget. Yeah, okay. But we didn't do anything with the survey last year. And if we don't take last year's survey, look at this year's data, and try to address some issues, then we're just wasting money. Sorry, we're paying you.
By all means.
You, you know, for example, and, and, and we, we know what happened, but we put a lot of money into street lighting and it didn't get better. We know why. But trails takes a bad jump. And I can only guess, literally, the only reason I can guess that storm, because stormwater is a super significant improvement in. And my question would be, is it because we saw the visibleness of the effects when it rained like heck last year and we had Lake Constitution and a couple other places that people saw the, the, the water detention? But if we can't drill down to some of these, to, to some of these, and particularly trails, and I mean, does that mean that we had more people move in that want trails? Like you said, not enough trailheads. There's, there's some, there's some things here that we've got to be able to say, what do we, you, you know, and I'm going to go back a slide or two, when it says that there was a large number of people that don't feel like they have a sense of community. I think that's on us. And I think that we need to figure out, are there things we can do that we can create a better sense of community? And if all we do is take that data and we don't do it, don't do anything with it, then I think we're on the path to failure.
Well, that's why we did take the survey. So now we can look at it, see where we can be better.
Yeah, we didn't, but we didn't do anything with the survey last.
But now we, now we have both surveys that show us the difference between the years.
Some of these, right, are, are trend lines, right? Two points doesn't make a trend, but it starts to indicate a trend. We don't know if we're getting better or worse until we see several data points in a row on any given question. So are you saying, okay, let's just do six years of surveys and we won't do anything for six years?
We'll do stuff, but we still need those six years of surveys.
I think we did do some stuff, because one of the things that we saw last time was a sense of community, and we invested more into community events, and it shows that that's gone up. We've been working on getting our roads, and that's kind of interesting because surface maintenance rates, three point seven increase, they had that prior slide, they were at the bottom.
It's still low on the list, but it's going up. So, so I think.
Somebody got, somebody got the roads fixed.
I think we've done some.
We've done some, but I, I don't think we, we specifically, we could do more. And we didn't focus on some of these issues that I think we could focus.
Well, I, I think about like, and, and I'll be honest, the, the code enforcement issue that I pushed during the budget session was because of feedback from residents, not because I was looking at the survey results. I'll be honest, but I think it's, it's indicative that the survey is accurate and that we can do things with it. I think it's a valuable service. I don't, I don't know that that's the discussion we need to be having right in this moment, but it's, I'm excited about, about the results of it. And the one thing, since I've got the floor, one thing that was hard for me to digest was all the comments.
Because it took forever to read them.
A hundred pages.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's hard to digest.
Yeah, and you'll.
Valuable tidbits in there, right?
Yeah, and you'll see as we go through, we try our best to graphically illustrate those comments in the aggregate and then pull out some of the key themes that we're seeing.
Have you even tried taking like, I mean, it's a symbol of like, reviews on Amazon now are done by AI, where they just take them all and put them.
Yeah.
Have you done that? We're going to see that slide.
We, so.
Yeah, you were giving her the segue.
Unfortunately, I don't have one there. I'll have to joke that.
No, but they, but to go on like the, the parks real quick, that's, that's something we know we should, we don't know why, but we now know that we can hold the meeting and get together at one of the parks or something, you know, our trailheads and things like that and discuss, you know, have people come and talk about what they want to see more of. So it's an area where we can now see right away, it's an area that we can gather the, you know, more people and hear from them.
And we didn't have specific follow-up questions about individual city service ratings. So again, that's something we could explore more in future surveys. But in this case, we did ask residents if there were services they felt were missing in the city. And most of the comments really hinged on just improvements to existing services that residents would like to see. So there were some comments around more parks and trails. That was one we pulled out here because it related to that largest statistically significant decrease in satisfaction ratings. But then some other comments here about just more investment in existing services or things could be done more effectively. So again, not any large gaps in areas that residents would like to see the city providing a service or amenity, but mostly just more, more investment in the services that are already provided. And then we did have some comments around more investment in a sense of community, in a sense of place. This one that we pulled out in particular that was illustrative of that theme, that maybe having a family fitness center or a rec center, something that would bring residents together, provide that type of amenity for folks on the west side would be helpful. So again, the areas where we're seeing some particular clamoring for additional investment really hinge around parks and recreation or recreational amenities. Looking at residents' preferences and current sources for news and information about the city, overall, our largest share of residents say that they're currently getting their information via email from the city. I will say, and I made this caveat last year as well, this is an online survey. Several of our invitations were sent via email, so this is not a particularly surprising digital bias. But we do send additional invitations via text message and postcard. So this isn't a complete anomaly that's attributable to that online survey mode. There is definitely a preference shift across the Wasatch Front towards more digital, sort of at-your-leisure accessible communication. So emails from the city at the top of the list here, we do have a little bit of a gap between the share of residents who would prefer to receive information via email and those who are currently receiving information via email. So making sure that those opportunities to opt-in or subscribe to city notifications are especially accessible as, as foolproof as possible is going to be beneficial over time. We have a large share of residents, or relatively large share of residents, relying on social media or printed advertisements, notices, flyers, et cetera, around the city for their city information as well. And then the city website, sort of rounding out our top tier of preferred information sources.
Shows the words that you used there.
This was.
They come from us or from you?
So this was a set of communication channels that I believe we originally provided and was vetted by the city before we fielded the survey.
So both. I would love to see a direct mailer be included in any future surveys that we do.
Just thinking of. What's a newspaper?
It works for mine.
And I wondered if perhaps the utility bill insert was a correct.
So I think a direct mailer to me is a mailer that comes in and talks about the city.
We can add that to next year's list of communication channels, no problem. We asked residents about their contact with the city over the past year. We have just over a third of folks in the city who say that they've reached out, whether that was to seek service or information or to file a complaint. Overall, our largest share of residents are still reaching out to the city over the phone. Fifty-four percent reached out that way. But twenty-nine percent went to the city website and about twenty-four percent, so a quarter of residents are contacting the city via email. Uh, overall, we have a a good satisfaction rating there. About two-thirds of residents who did reach out to the city were at least somewhat satisfied with the response and interaction they received, uh, the level of professionalism and courtesy they received from city employees that they spoke to. Uh, we do have twenty-one percent there, so about one in five residents who were some degree dissatisfied overall. Uh, typically, we see those responses coming from folks who didn't get the answer they wanted from their interactions with the city. Uh, but we do have some residents who felt that they were dismissed or not appropriately responded to generally. So over, uh, no one bothered to contact me back about the issue on my street. Uh, I'm sort of illustrating that most common theme from those folks who were some degree dissatisfied. Uh, we have a larger share of residents this year who have reached out to the city over the past three hundred sixty-five days than in two thousand twenty-three. Uh, and our share of those who are at least somewhat satisfied has gone down slightly. Uh, that is right on the cusp of the margin of error for the share of residents who did reach out to the city. So not necessarily cause for concern off the bat, but certainly something that we'd want to keep an eye on moving forward.
Can we track my dissatisfaction when my call to the city is getting a computer and not a person? So I'm curious if if that might be part of the reason we're slipping.
That is something we would have to ask about specifically next year, but we can keep that in mind. Uh, and then our last section of questions here, we asked residents whether they would support or oppose the continued use of tax dollars to provide city cemetery services uh at a new future location once the current cemetery reaches capacity. In total, we had thirty-nine percent of residents who would at least somewhat support that continued investment. Uh, thirty-six percent of residents say that they neither support nor oppose. So again, a level of just disengagement here from the topic. Uh, twenty-five percent of residents were at least somewhat opposed to that continued investment. Uh, residents in districts one and four are slightly more likely to support that continued investment of tax dollars than those residents living in districts two and three. Um, and looking at some of the other demographic and socioeconomic breakdowns here, our residents who are ages forty-four and under are most likely to oppose that continued investment of tax dollars. Uh, and maybe a little bit of a Superman complex there. Uh, and then our households that have an income of a hundred fifty thousand dollars per year or higher are more likely than their relatively lower earning counterparts to oppose that investment.
So what was the exact question we asked here?
Uh, would you support or oppose the continued use of tax dollars to provide cemetery services at new future locations once the West Jordan Cemetery reaches capacity?
So we didn't assign a dollar value or ask them how much they were willing to pay.
We did not have that level of specifics uh to test in this survey. That concludes our whirlwind tour of this year's data and comparisons to last year's. I'm happy to answer any specific questions if they come up uh or if there are any that are top of mind now.
I just have one question for my fellow council members and maybe the mayor because one of the comments was the city income, the city needs to create income that isn't taxes or fees that and for the, and the extras people pay. How would a city, I don't.
Yeah.
How does this city create income without taxes or fees?
Sell stuff.
Just cover the gold money.
Sell stuff.
No, no, okay, I read that.
We can, we can lease, we can lease veterans' parks in their mind.
There was another comment asking about the mayor's uh little stress, uh stress ball coats.
Oh, phones, where you can.
We can sell those.
Okay, I guess that's it.
I know, I know Mill Creek and they're really leasing it to make money, but their new building that they built,
City Hall.
They're leasing spaces in there, but that pays for the building. It doesn't help residents.
Yeah, I don't know that we're allowed to do things that.
No, I think the.
I don't think.
Most of the money that they lease goes to pay for the building.
It sounds good.
Which means that the taxpayers aren't paying for.
Yeah.
In theory, yes.
I think in their mind, they're thinking bring in businesses that bring in more sales revenues, so that comes out of tax. I think.
More business property tax rather than residential taxes is probably where that's actually going.
I'm surprised on your uh.
You've always talked about.
The little word cloud, the dumpster was, was so small uh in there, because I, in the comments, I saw dumpster.
Saw a lot of people who are upset that we got rid of the old dumpster program.
Free dumpsters.
The free dumpster.
Yeah.
That aren't free.
I thought that in a lot of comments.
Yeah, I like I said, I was surprised in the word cloud that wasn't bigger.
Well, keeping in mind that, again, we had about fifteen hundred residents responding and those open ends could be rather wordy at times. The fact that dumpster shows up at all suggests something.
Yeah, no, well, I mean, it showed up a lot. I've read through every one of those.
Yeah.
But it, it's also impressive that they took so much time to write.
Oh, yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, residents were very engaged with the survey.
That's why I, I think it would be good for you guys to consider and maybe we can do it on our own, but um, yeah, reviews now are basically, take the thousands of reviews and AI will tell you what kind of comes from that, so.
Yeah, we typically do that to pull out the themes that we see and then graphically represent that with a word cloud and pull out some select comments that are representative of each of those themes, so.
Just something that I'll reemphasize, I'd like to see, you know, code enforcement is on the very bottom of that list. Uh, I'd like to see a little more digging as to uh what people's issues are with code enforcement. Let's get to the bottom of that.
Sorry.
I've, I've made notes of the comments that you've made for next year's survey and will uh.
Um, and just one thing to keep in mind too, as we continue to go forward and do these surveys and get the trends right over time, um, we've had exactly one survey prior to now. We've done exactly one budget in response to that survey, whether we've done a lot or too much or too little, and that budget has been in effect for seventeen days. Have we not moved the needle yet? Well, of course.
We could have used this survey data from last year's budget and chose not. Because that survey was a manual left.
Yeah. Regardless, we've used the survey once for one budget. We now have two surveys. We'll be crunch this data for our retreat in January, figure out what we wanna focus on as a result of this. And then in January, we'll decide how that applies to the next budget. And this is the, this is the cadence that we wanna keep.
Exactly. So these two together are gonna help us plan for the next year's budget.
Right, and then the one after that, well, now we'll have three.
And then we'll see in terms.
Like, I didn't know there was an issue with Trails. I, I mean.
The truth that I usually hear from people is they have to keep the Trails.
Yes, that's the same where.
But I would also guess it's number of Trails too, because.
Maintaining them like South Jordan.
But like on, on the west side, sorry, on the east side, we don't have many Trails.
Yeah.
What is that thing along the Jordan River?
That's one.
Survey. What is that thing called? Oh, oh, you have a pack.
But if you notice, if you notice, one of the comments was, is we use Draper and Sandy more. The question that I would ask is that Dimple Dell, is that Corner Canyon? Is that because Draper's got five thousand acres of open property up there in that corner canyon that we don't have anywhere close to? And so we, we have to pay attention to that. But we also have to understand that, you know, Sandy's got, like I said, Sandy's got Dimple Dell that runs for miles and it's a horse trail and they have Little Cotton with Bell Canyon Trail.
Their geographic advantages.
And, and.
Trails are flattering.
And the, you know, Draper, like I said, you know.
Lots of reserves land there for that.
It's very easy for my son to get on a Draper Trail because he goes out his backyard and gets on one. The, the, the fact of the matter is, is that it's, it's, we've got a different geographic and we have to pay attention.
Any other questions about the survey methodology, results, trends? Um, I think this is great data. These are a lot of discussions that we'll have forward as this informs our budget discussion in the next six months or so.
I would love to have maybe a ten-minute send out what the survey is going to look like and in ten minutes, are there any additional things or changes the council would like to see before we finalize it?
Yeah, I think, though, I think there was something sort of like that. We talked about it, but I, I think we were still doing up to it that we didn't know what we.
Oh, God, we fired it really was. Here's the survey we're getting.
Oh, no, but I remember they was, they was asked, what other questions do you want answered?
The cemeteries.
Yeah, that is, that's exactly right. But we were all like, I don't know yet. But I think after getting a couple, I think we're gonna be better to answer that.
We'll just keep getting it back.
And we wanna keep some questions the same. You change questions every year, you're trying to land some.
Exactly. Could you tell me, um, what was the response period?
Uh, that is a great question and I don't remember off the top of my head, but I know it's included on our methodology slide. Uh, so survey was in the field for just under a month uh from May ninth to June thirty.
You should.
We wrapped it up just a month ago. Yep.
So you had fifteen hundred and twenty-seven people. How many people did you reach out to?
Many more than that. We sent approximately twenty thousand email and or text message invitations and I wanna say another twenty-five hundred postcard invitations.
That was an incredible response rate.
Yeah, all things considered, that is a fantastic response rate. This is A plus for the survey rate industry.
Let people know when it's coming.
La- last year, if I'm wrong, but last year we were under a thousand. I think it was nine twenty-eight.
Right, it was under a thousand.
That's correct, yeah.
So this is, this is a real.
Right. But I think if we start doing a better campaign with us letting people know these things are coming, please fill the map. Maybe we can pump it up a little bit more.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you.
You too. Next, uh, anyone on the agenda? This is our master, transportation master plan update from Mr. Brian Clark, his beautiful voice. Say.
I'm gonna say. Yeah, cold or do I smoke?
Well, you've got COVID.
Joe Mize has COVID.
All right, I just wanna um go over, we've been working on this transportation master plan with WCG. Um, it's been ongoing for about a year, about a year. Got to the point where we want input um and answer any questions you folks might have. There's a lot of information in there, uh, even more than the last transportation master plan because we've heard different things that council suggested, tried to implement some of those. You guys should have got a copy of the not, the draft and then stored it up also. So we got a few people here, Jeremy Searle at WCG. Um, his group are the ones that uh updated the master plan. And we've got Nate Nilton, our city engineer, Master Gallup, our traffic engineer, so. I just wanted to introduce it and I'll turn the time over to Jeremy.
So what you're telling me is after you read the dollar amount, you got stressed and now you can't speak.
I'll use that. So I'll turn it over to Jeremy.
Sure. Uh, thank you. I'm excited to be here with you. Uh, again, my name is Jeremy Searle with WCG. Um, we have loved working with your staff. They're amazing and uh provided a ton of great input and we were able to meet with them regularly to go through this. Um, hopefully you all were given a a link to this story map. This summarizes the master plan really well. Um, we like to to do these when we do a a transportation master plan because the document ends up being, you know, a hundred pages and no one wants to to read that. I say that having put a lot of work into it. Um, but I know that no one's read up on this. Um, you can give this to residents or developers or or um any staff, whomever, you can find gray, the key information that you want really quickly, okay? So that's definitely what we'll go through today. Um, there's links here to take you directly to what you wanna look at, but if you just scroll through it, it gives you uh that same information. So.
What is this website, by the way?
So there's, there should be a link in your packet, I believe, and um we, it is also put on the city server and can be linked on, linked on the city website.
It's one thirty-nine. Thank you. Sorry. Go ahead.
Correct. Um, so this is just the intro. I'm, I'm just kinda gonna go through, but if you have questions, please stop me and we'll talk more about it, but I'll just kinda give a high-level overview here. So it's the intro. Uh, we did do a lot of public involvement, including a survey and I, we just had a, spent a lot of time talking about surveys. Um, so I won't dive into that, but you can click this link and see what the survey is looking at transportation. I will say from the the last presentation, there are two things that stuck out to me. One, one of their biggest concerns was traffic, right? I, I don't think that should surprise anyone, but that's something that we paid close attention to. Uh, the one that did surprise me just a little bit is she noted that um, the public felt like Western City was uh handling growth and um, new developments very positively and that, and that had gone up. And usually Long Wasatch Front, that's kind of a negative connotation. People don't like growth because they don't like change, right? So I think that speaks very highly of the city that you guys are handling that well. And and West Jordan is obviously growing very quickly. Uh, okay, let's talk about safety for just a second. Um, any of these maps, you can, can click on this. Uh, and this is hidden back here, but we can zoom in. And this is kind of a a heat map showing where where crashes occur. Um, you'll notice and no surprise here, but the crashes tend to congregate on a higher um, higher volume roadways, right? Um, a lot of them are UDOT roadways. Um, it's, we looked really closely at this and may's recommendations uh for different safety improvements.
Amazing, interesting to me. Um, it's seventy-eight, Hundred South appears to have more trouble with accidents than ninety.
Yeah, that is.
I can just visualize.
It goes through more.
Besides a heat map, it looks like it's got greater number of accidents than than nine thousand south.
That is a little surprising. The volumes are absolutely higher than they get, so that is, that is a little bit.
I passed an accident on my way here, actually, on seventy-eighth. No, no, I can no, pas- past, not progress.
I think Richard will say otherwise.
Past.
Anecdotally, I can, I, anecdotally, I can tell you that seventy-eighth and thirteenth is one of the worst intersections in the city, particularly for people who run red lights.
That's why we don't have it on.
And 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 you, the, the, so you see that, you see those accidents at seventy-eighth and Temple.
Yeah.
And and, you know, if you went to the right a little bit, anecdotally, I would agree with that just because you can't believe the number of people who run red lights at that intersection constantly. It's, and it's not just, you know, most of the time it's Chad and his fam, no, I'm just.
I was just gonna say, I've never seen an accident there, so I guess we see two different things.
Yeah.
Infernatic.
So, I mean, one thing to keep in mind, crashes are random events, right? Um, but sometimes you can see patterns in them and we try and address our recommendations to where we start to see those types of patterns. Um, that doesn't mean we'll, we'll solve all crashes, um, although that is our goal. But uh, you know, they are random. Um, this, this shows the fatal and serious injury crashes. Okay, so these are the ones we really don't want. Um, serious injury means you're, you're, maybe they were almost fatal, right? So they're very, uh, very. And there's been a lot in West Jordan. Um.
Does it account traffic signals? Because I've noticed on seventy-eighth, all along, since they switched over to that new arrow, it's got the yellow.
Flashing yellow arrow.
As opposed to the, the five.
The five section head.
Yeah, and people seem to be confused by it.
Uh, it's interesting you say that. So there've been studies on that and it actually shows that there are fewer left turn related crashes with the flashing yellow than with the, the five section head.
Okay.
Um, and then you get considerably fewer when you go to protected only.
Okay.
Um, the problem with, and if you're solely focused on safety, you'd say do protect it only everywhere, right? Problem with that is your operations suffer because you can't, um, you can't make a permitted left when, when there's a gap, right? And so sometimes people get frustrated by that, like, oh, I could go, but it's, I have a red arrow, so I, so I can't, even though it's open, right? And so that flashing yellow is kind of that in-between where it balances operations and safety. Uh, yeah.
I'm do you not, is, is this a UDOT issue where I don't see a lot of accidents on Bangator Mountain? I see them on where the intersections are, but.
Let's say that it's on city roadways, no, I'm not this.
So this is only. So this is only on city roadways?
Yeah, we.
Except that Ninetieth and Seventy-Eighth and Redwood are also UDOT roads.
City intersection with city roadways. We, we pulled up Mountain View. You guys probably know this, but Mountain View is one of the most, um, high crashed crash roads in the, in the state.
Oh, yeah.
There's, there's just a lot.
With what's that?
Well, you're thinking of US six.
Yeah.
They've actually made a lot of them because it's gotten better. That used to be like one of the deadly roadways. That one's gotten better. Mountain View is died up there. It's, it is not good. And the, at this point, the only way to solve that is to turn Mountain View into a freeway, right? So we give, people aren't running red lights at seventy miles an hour.
So focus on.
Or, or Utah highway. Even though they're supposed to start patrolling it, I haven't seen them patrolling it yet. That if.
Listen, that's supposed to take.
Yeah, if highway patrol would start patrolling it would help.
Yeah, still haven't seen it.
Legislators, when you're listening, you'd love that support.
Um, I think I've talked about this before. Um, West Jordan does have a little bit higher crash rates than the neighboring communities here.
Where's Harriman? I wanna see Harriman.
Uh, we didn't put Harriman on.
Is that based on square mile population or just gross?
This is a rate, so it's crashes, uh, vehicle miles traveled.
Well, we do have a lot of vehicle miles in West Jordan.
Okay, so let's talk, let's talk about transit here for a second. Alright, so this is the existing transit map here and I think I mentioned this before, but, but West Jordan for the Southwest quadrant of the valley does pretty well with transit comparatively. I know, you know, Harriman, Riverton, Lufdel are frustrated that they don't have more transit service.
Um, it's coming.
And it's coming and there's a study that's happening right now with that, right? So we've of course got the red line. We've got several, uh, bus routes through here. We've got front runner just outside the city. Um, and you can see the bus stops on here as well. So that's kind of what's happening now.
So no buses in the far west.
Correct. Yeah, and, and this is a rapidly growing area. That'll probably change in the future, but.
But fifty-six hundred will have a bus real.
That's correct. They're doing the, the BRT or the express core route. Excuse me. I always say wrong, the core route.
They started as BRT.
Yeah, yeah, the core route for.
Still west of fifty-six, there's one stop.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, but if you're Harriman, you have nothing.
Like you have to.
Yeah, but they're not in good condition.
Hit enter, let me. Here we go. Alright. So, uh, future transit, um, this is kind of interesting that, so you, you're probably all familiar with WFRC. They're the, the MPO, the, the regional planning organization, right? They plan for transit and then UTA does their own transit plan and they don't match. Okay? And so that, that's always interesting. Um, so we put these future plans adjacent to each other. You've got the scroll bar that you can kind of go back and forth and to see those differences. So this side is the WFRC plan.
And.
So neither side wants to go west of fifty-six. That's interesting.
Yeah, at this point, there's not a lot there on the west.
Cause they're just playing catch up.
Just twenty thousand.
Yeah, I mean, that's gonna change as densities get higher and stuff out there and they see that, but, um, UTA is, is struggling right now because they don't have the funding to add more routes and stuff. So they're very conservative about that. So the fifty-six hundred west, uh, west one is an interesting one because that's been on the plan for a long time and the only reason they're doing it is because UDOT is saying you have to build this now because we can't build Mountain View corridors freeway until that's it. That was in the environmental documents. And so that, you know, it's basically forcing them to, to build that. So UTA has been a little hesitant to expand services and stuff due to budget constraints and ridership cutback with COVID stuffs. Pretty interesting there. Uh, you can't see the regional transportation plan. There's quite a few, um, plans here though, and if for those of you on the website, you can click these and, and look at them closer. Uh, tells you what they are. This is a, a local bus route. Right? Tells you where they're going, where it's coming from. So there's more details here if you wanna look through things in, in specific. Okay, uh, we have a link here to the, the station area plans. Those are being done, uh, separately from this, but of course they tie in. Um, and those have all been finished, um, except for the, uh, Old Bingham fifty-six hundred west station. So that's, that's being done now. Um, so those are linked here. Uh, the active transportation plan was done just a year, two, two years ago. Um, so we uh, didn't update that, but we made sure that our master plans kind of tied into that and made sure they, they fit with where bike lanes and trails and things are planned. So. So there's links to that. Okay, so the next section, we'll talk about roadways. And, and I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on the travel demand model, but just know that this is the analysis that we go through. And we, we work a lot with your planners and your engineering staff and stuff to understand the socioeconomic data. So your population growth, where your jobs and density, um, housing are all gonna be, right? And we program that into the travel demand model and we look out to the future and this is, this is done on a regional scale. So the whole Los Angeles front, uh, it's originally put together by WFRC. And then we take that and we update it so it fits West Jordan specifically. So we know exactly where your, your, uh, growth is happening, where your new subdivisions are coming in, new jobs. And so it gives us a really good idea of, of what the travel demand or future volumes are gonna be. So this is the existing conditions. Um, red means congested, green means it's good, right? Yellow's kind of on the verge.
What's that?
Dark, dark red.
That's really bad. Yeah.
Oh, darn.
So, yeah. Are you looking at ninety?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's bad, right? And that's why they're widening it, right?
As the really dark.
It's gonna make some areas more dark. They widen just one area.
Yeah, it'll just push the dark red west.
It'll push it, it'll push it west. You're right. And, and it'll need to happen. So we look at different horizon years. We look out to twenty thirty-three. You can see on the, we have the slider bar again. On the left is our no build. If we did nothing. Um, you know, we see a lot of dark red in here. And a lot of red. Uh, if we do the projects that we've outlined in the master plan, a lot of that goes to green and yellow, which is, which is good, right? That's what we want. So you can kind of see that difference there. And then same thing out to twenty fifty. So again, we see a lot of red. We don't do anything. And then that improves quite a bit into the future.
So, till Ninetieth and Ninety.
So let's, let's talk about ninety for a second. So.
No. Cause you're gonna say we can't do it.
So.
We've already had this discussion.
We have had this discussion. I know, and, and many of you have heard it. I think Mayor's probably tired of me talking about it, but, um, West Jordan's biggest challenge is your east-west travel. Right? And that doesn't surprise anybody, right? You guys have tons of great north-south roads, right? Bangor, Mountain View, I fifteen, thirteenth, Redwood. Uh, fourth thousand.
Don't include thirteenth in that.
Well, you, but, but there's a lot of options.
There's lots of, maybe not great options, but there are a lot more.
But there's options, right? You look at east-west. Um, there's not, right? I mean, seventy-eighth doesn't connect to I fifteen. Right? Um, seventieth gets stopped by the airport. Ninetieth right now is kind of the best one, but it, and it will eventually go all the way out to SR one eleven, but it doesn't yet. But it's planned to, right? Um, and that's kind of your only route, right? There's not a lot of other options here, so, um, that's a challenge and we, we talked about different things. Um, you'll notice all these east-west routes are programmed or, or planned to be widened, right? To help improve those. Um, we, we talked about, um, options to try and get in around through whatever we could do around the airport up here. Um, and I think that's gonna be an additional study that we recommend.
Try over the planes.
Yeah, we, we met with the airport. We, they were doing their master plan and we tried to find options there and there, there just wasn't anything.
Can I ask you a question?
And for the big dig, we talked about the tunnel and that, that didn't seem to be high on their list. Yeah.
On a really, real high level, there, I've heard people talk about how when you widen a road, it just attracts more traffic and that you never solve the problem. Can you talk about that a little bit? Is that a real?
Well, look at I fifteen. They widened it. That's great. It's a good thing they did, but now it's full again.
Then they invited millions more people. You can't keep inviting people.
You had a good point. I mean, if you widen seventy-eighth to six lanes, the, the four, if you build it, they'll use it.
So, yeah, the, the, you, you're all making great points, right? And I, I agree with those. Um, I think what this really illustrates is the importance of a grid, right? We've got, um, a lot of people wanting to go north and south, just as much as we do east and west, but it works, right? Because there are options. And so the key here is having a good grid system to give people options. Um, originally, you know, when Brigham Young came and set up the grid, right? But then it didn't, it didn't happen, right? There.
Have an airport in the middle of.
We were talking about this the other night, the difficulty with West Jordan. And why east-west is so important and everybody ignores east-west. Is that if you go from the eastern border of West Jordan City to West Jordan, the western boundary of West Jordan City, that's going from the temple to eighty is south. That's the issue. We, we don't, we don't pay attention to the fact that we have, and but from north to south, what? We're two miles long, three miles long. We're very, we're very skinny, but we're super long. And so that's what, that's part of our issue that complicates it is that we run from Ninetieth West, Eighty-Fifth West and we go all the way to the river. And so that, that's a, that's a substantial diff, that's a substantial distance that creates a lot of lane miles. And that's one of the issues that somehow we've got to look at and help mitigate.
Yeah, the biggest is the airport though. It's just, we don't have all the.
Oh, yeah. We only have one, we only have one road that goes.
That, that goes all the way, right?
Yeah, seventy-eighth is close, but it doesn't tie to I fifteen.
Right.
I mean, seventy-eighth does tie into State Street. But, um, you know, it's, so we only have two roads that run east-west and it makes it extremely problematic when you're talking about a road that runs ten and eleven, twelve miles east and west.
I agree. And, and let's talk about facility type for just a second. So, um, we've got I fifteen, we've got Bangor, got Mountain View. Those are all expressway or freeway type facilities.
U one eleven will be.
And U one eleven will, it's more of an arterial, but, but high capacity, right? Arterial, yeah. Um, north-south, I mean, you start up at the top, you've got I eighty, two oh one, and then two fifteen, but there's really no east-west. Yeah, two eighteen, weird U shape.
And you got Bangor down there at bottom.
Yeah, Bangor that kind of does that too, right?
My own, you will do it.
So there's, there's a real east-west freeway type facility, right? And, and we've talked about that. Um, Ninetieth doesn't make sense. That's a, that's part of this, part of your community. It's a huge part of your community. There's, there's residential, there's commercial, there's all that. Um, honestly, looking at the travel demand model, that's a lot, your, your freeway type facility is likely gonna be down at one twenty-sixthish. And I don't know that it'll be a freeway per se. The last study I saw showed four lanes each direction. Right now Ninetieth's gone to three each direction, which is a huge road. Um, the last, like I said, the last day I saw is one twenty-six through Riverton, potentially four lanes each direction.
Is the, is the long-term regional map still have the connector between Bangor and Mountain View down there in the corner?
Through. About one twenty-sixth.
But as a freeway kind of, as Bangor is becoming a freeway, Mountain View becomes a freeway. There's.
There needs to be one. There's not a.
Be one on a long-term plan.
Yeah, it's kind of gone on and off, but right now there's not. Um, one twenty-sixth, like I said, is the the one that's being focused on and it looks like right now it's a four lane each way.
There needs to be. That should be, that should be.
Anything on sixty-two hundred?
There's no.
Um, I don't think there's any plans for that.
Sixty-two is too small.
Yeah, but I, I, I have a house just right off of sixty-two hundred that's within West Jordan. So I'm, I'm used to using that. When I need to go east-west and I'm coming from the north. Well, there you go.
So let's, let's talk about projects then. So what, what are we gonna do about this, right? So, um, yeah, zoom in a little bit. So if you wanna look at the list of projects in detail, you can click on this list and it gives you the name and and details on it, right? Or you can look at the map and see where those are.
Well.
Um, sorry, here's the face. So everything in red is phase one. So that would be built in the next, between now and the next ten years. Okay? Everything in blue is the following ten years. And then everything in purple is the last phase or so out to twenty fifty. Okay? So you've built a lot of projects here in the next ten years shown in red. You got a lot of new roads out here. Um, widening on Ninetieth, Seventy-Eighth, Seventieth, all planned. Um, that east-west.
There's the screen with what shows its funding.
Yeah, great question. Um, so I don't think we have one on here, but the STIP shows what funded.
You don't.
Yeah, the STIP, the STIP has the next five years of funds. We could add that.
Well, it's always gonna change, right?
And it, and it does always change. Yeah, so.
Depends on which lobbyist gets to do it.
Um, if you scroll down, you can see these by scope. Okay, so red is new roadways. Uh, purple is operational projects and blue is widening projects. Okay, so you can see, um, you know, like U one eleven, you're all familiar with that project. That's being being widened. Mountain View will be turned into a freeway through here. Lot of new roads.
Which adds to the east-west issue.
Yeah.
Hopefully that's.
Hopefully they use Mountain View.
Seventy-fourth, hopefully.
Well, we say that, but if we want them to spend money in our city, we don't want them to just get on Mountain View.
It's true. It also gives people an opportunity to come to our city more easily and spend money potentially, as long as we have a good.
Right things.
The, the right things, which is why we have economic development.
Alright, so let's go down. Let's talk about intersection projects for a second. Intersections, again, these are, are the three phases, the container. Uh, you'll notice there's a lot in the next ten years, a lot of red intersections here. Um, you can see these, there's quite a few signals that are planned, a few rail crossing improvements, a couple roundabouts. Quite a few.
You don't have to be excited about your roundabouts, right?
What's the one on seventy-eighth? It looks like it's right at seventy-eighth from the river.
Seventy-eighth and the river, are you talking over here?
What, right there? The, that one.
Blue branch collector.
Is that a rail, is that a rail crossing fix?
It's not one.
This is a bridge replacement for the, over the river. So, thank you.
Where the bridge gets narrow at seventy-eight, it goes into Gardner Village.
Yep.
I have a question. Um, I watched, of course, I watched a video about how if every road had roundabouts, that even though it slows traffic down, it also allows traffic to continue to move. And that there's, you'd have better flow even though it's slower.
Yeah, was this, was this the UDOT video?
No, it was not a UDOT.
Okay. UDOT made one just recently. It was a Bill's video.
Yeah.
Um, UDOT made one, uh, there's several, there's lots out there. Okay, so, um, there's a lot of benefits to roundabouts. Okay, um, crashes go way down at roundabouts. I'm not talking a little bit. I'm talking by ninety percent crashes drop. Okay, that's, that's huge. Um, so if we wanna talk about safety, roundabouts are, are a way to go. Um, operationally, just like you said, they're, they keep traffic flowing, right? In all directions. Um, it's not like you have to stop at a red light and wait sixty seconds until you get your green, right? As soon as there's an opening, you can go.
The video I watched talked about how when you're, there's a, a stack of cars at a red light, but then there's a wide open road in front of them that's not currently being utilized. That, that's a waste of space, so to speak, when, when there's.
So like they're saying that if you had roundabouts, you wouldn't need to make roads as.
Like they're saying that if you had roundabouts, you wouldn't need to make roads as wide because. The entire road is being utilized constantly versus intermittently.
Yeah, it's a great point. With signals, you can only have certain movements go at the same time, right? That's why we have left turn through, right turn pockets, right? So we have all these lanes. With roundabouts, you can make all those movements. From a single lane and it, and it continues to flow. You don't have to wait and stack, right? So roundabouts work really slick. And.
Why do we hate them so much?
Well, great question. So there's, there's a couple, there's a couple of things. Um, one, they're more expensive than signals, okay? Uh, two, they take, sometimes take more space, right?
Why, why is a resident hated?
It's because they're new.
Yeah.
They're new and they're, they don't understand how to drive them, right? Um, that's part of the biggest thing. I will say that. We wanna be careful on how we use them on the, our biggest roads, roadways, right? Arterials. When they get too big, then roundabouts start to get confusing or overloaded. But for collector roadways, residential roadways, um, even large collectors, they were. I don't know, it's just when you get to those big arterials, you know, redwood or whatever, that you start to wonder. Yeah.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's a great point.
Yeah, they've got the roundabouts with the.
That's true. So, uh, cloud drivers don't usually like them, and large truck drivers don't, don't love them.
If the road was wider.
Roads with roundabouts don't easily fly.
Yep, and they do slow traffic, um, keep it safer, but they also keep it moving. So there's, there's a lot of benefits there. You just gotta get them in the right. Okay. This map will show you all the intersection types, so signals, roundabouts, um, bridge replacements. You know, ITs, all that, so those are shown here. And. So existing network, so this is what's out there now. I know I'm taking too much of your time. Uh, we do have all your road cross-sections here, uh, so you can look at those, but if, let's say we wanna look at. Kind of your three-lane collector, you know, we show buffered bike lanes, traveling each direction, park strips. You know, all that, so you can look at those and see what a, what does a minor collector look like, what does a arterial look like, that type of thing. Um, and the engineering department can design those appropriately.
Hey, it's living.
It's a Greenland.
It's Russian Holland.
Okay, this very bottom one, um, this is just for, for people to use if they want. So you can click on here. And you can turn on and off any of the layers we talked about. We also have some extra layers on here, like, um. All the dead ends in the, in the neighborhood, all the roadways, whatever. So if people are interested, they can come on and compare. You know, different things, where's the intersection projects compared to the roadway, compared to, you know, the schools or, or whatnot. So they can turn those on and off and just kind of compare. So, we went through that kind of fast. What questions do you have, or what, what can I answer for you?
How much input do we have on this? How much of this is decided for us versus what we can actually?
That's a great question. We've been working on this for, for quite a while with, with staff and we, we've done a lot of. Open houses and surveys and, and things like that, try to get as much input from the community as possible. Some of the, the project stuff is very much driven by, uh, the analysis that shows where the problems are, right? And so those are where the recommendations come. Um, we very much want to hear your comments and questions and. Make adjustments as needed.
But I think the other problem is where a lot of our major concerns are.
Our hands are tied.
There's that, but there's also just the funding question.
Yeah, oh yeah.
We, we heard how far behind the eight mile we were a couple weeks ago and we had budget discussions.
So, so the next step in this is gonna be impact fees, okay? So, so this puts together a capital facilities plan, and that's in the ma, in the master plan. You can charge impact fees for projects that are planned within the next ten years. So anything in, in red on those previous maps.
Why aren't all the projects in red?
Yeah, that's a great question.
Because we can't do them all in ten years. We can pretend we can.
To me, it just says we need to shift our mindset and really making these communities walk.
Well, just wait for the next item on the agenda that you're part of.
I was about to say, that sounded like a T O.
Except walking doesn't solve.
It doesn't, but allowing communities to have a grocery store walkable or a gas, you know, like.
You say a gas station walk.
I was fast.
So the next step in this, once we get this done, is applying the new, we're doing an impact fee study. This is lagging because we had to get the master plan done. Once the master plan's done, we can implement the fees. So that's the next.
One thing I do want to mention is I know it's in our city, I know it's not necessarily our roads, Ninetieth. On the west side, west of, uh, Mountain View. There's a lot of resident concern about the intersection, Mountain View, uh, not Mountain, Ninetieth, New Bingham. Ninetieth, Duck Creek Way. There's a lot of resident concern in that neighborhood about how that's gonna look. I don't think it's set in stone yet.
So then, so there was a feasibility study done, um, and the next up is the environmental, which is, is happening shortly.
I just signed, we awarded it today. That connection.
But you guys did, you guys did an alternative study.
Yes, they did a no-build study.
That to this, to see if the section between. Mountain View and Sixty-Fourth West had to go through, and I think. That was the reason we had that open house out at the elementary school. Was that the ultimate conclusion was that's gonna go through in one way, shape or form.
You're exactly right.
Right, but, but the way, shape or form, I don't know how much control we have over being a UDOT kind of. But if we're doing the environmental, I guess we have some say in it's not.
In conjunction.
I would, I would really like to explore alternatives on how to design that to make it work best. I really don't want somebody coming to us and saying, this is the only design that will work. Period.
It might be an issue of doing betterments.
Well, what, I, I'm not even that smart. I could come up with five alternatives. I mean.
Well, I. I, I think the biggest issue in that particular intersection is. How Duck Creek interacts with the, with Ninetieth. And whether it dead-ends at Ninetieth or it curves around and goes through the park or some other dang thing. But I agree, we need to. Ninety, that, that stretch of Ninetieth needs to go through, right? But we need to make sure that as we're designing that, that we're mitigating. The connectivity between the two neighborhoods and Duck Creek and a couple of those other things. And, and Zach's right, there, there are some different things that we need to look at. As that stretch, as that three-hundred-foot stretch of Ninetieth gets connected. That three-hundred feet of Ninetieth isn't the most important part of the road, it's everything else around it. And pedestrian crossings or box culverts or sky bridges or whatever in the heck else is there? I think that's the important, I think that's the, what, where he's going.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of variables.
There, there are a lot of variables and there's a lot of concerns, and you're right that. It's the other stuff that's driving all the concerns, right? The pedestrian crossings, the connection with Duck Creek, the neighborhoods. I don't want to discount the importance of Ninetieth, because we've talked about, that's the only road that goes all the way through, and that carries a lot of traffic, right? So that, that's, that's a big driver of this whole thing, right? So it's needed. Now the question is, how do we, how do we make the rest of it be, um, comfortable and, and usable? And a nice place for the residents.
One of my concerns, I've never heard, I mean, I've heard the residents talk, but my concern is, there's a lot of truck traffic that will continue to come off Mountain View. That's a freeway to go west and then turn on to New Bingham. So the current setup that we have, let's say it's Seventieth by the airport, and then Ninetieth over by your house, that's not gonna work. We have to have something that will move truck traffic towards Amazon, move truck traffic towards all of the industrial out there. We can't just have a left-hand turn. We, we gotta have some kind of dedicated.
It's not a left-hand turn, ask me a flyover.
I'm asking for a flyover, I'm asking for some dedicated lanes.
Because New Bingham is busy.
The, the fact of the matter is, we've got to have good intersection at Ninetieth and New Bingham.
Can't just have a one-lane turn.
That diverts the.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be a dual left. Um, and then in the northbound, the rights are actually free rights, dual free rights.
Yeah, I'm thinking about up in Logan, where that intersection is where it comes from.
On eighty-nine.
Yeah, so when you're coming down into Logan and there's like the two main highways that meet.
Yeah, so. Out of Sardine Canyon, then out of like Hyrum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if that's the best way to do it, but I, I'm worried about the truck traffic. That's.
Yeah, it's, it's huge. The, the truck percentages are super high.
What I mean, I would love to see what had been considered. Somebody show me, we looked at that and here's why it won't work. Instead of saying, this is the one that we decided will work, and that's all you get to see, Mr. Councilman, I'm sorry.
So that's in the feasibility study, so it's, it's there in the documentation, um, that was submitted.
Do we have that? I mean, I see the feasibility study, I don't know if I've ever seen it.
Yeah, so it has different options. Yes, so, yeah, that's all.
I mean, that's just a case in point, right, of, of when I say what input does the council have on this? What input does the council have on that intersection? Right? There's, there's certainly a way that I would like to see it done, and Chad's got a great point about the traffic that has to go southwest.
Yeah.
Um, and how does that queue up with Mountain View's only a couple of hundred yards down the street? How does that?
Yeah, so you'll, you'll notice in the, in the feasibility study, it shows, uh, Ninetieth having to be. Three lanes each direction between Mountain View and New Bingham. So that, you know, three lanes each direction, and then from there, it splits. And we actually have pretty equal amounts of traffic going on New Bingham and Ninetieth each direction. So those are two lanes each direction from there.
Yeah, because that's Ninetieth, right? There's just built for two lanes, not three.
Right, and, and, and it, and that's the correct number of lanes through those neighborhoods, right? So that, that's perfect. But when you take those two lanes and join them together and head to Mountain View, that's gonna.
That's, that's what I'm saying. I just remember, I remember many, many years ago when seventy-eighth was contemplated widening on the south side of the airport. And there was Airport Road and New Bingham and seventy-eight. And I saw fifteen different things, but we can do a flyover that goes this way, and we can do, you know, streets that come this way. We can reroute this whole interchange and put it over here, and you know. There was all these different alternatives, and it was like, what do you like? What are the pros and cons? Let's talk about them. Here I've got neighbors coming to me saying, we know it's gonna be crap. What are you gonna do about it? And I'm, and I'm like, I haven't, how, how do you know what I don't know? Because I haven't seen.
I don't know why residents are saying that, but we looked at. There weren't a lot of grade-separated intersections that we looked at, because those are so much more costly. At grade intersection, we're gonna do that.
No, and I don't, I don't grade separate, that's just what I saw, seventy.
Sure.
And that obviously never came to pass, right? We, we see what's there and what's there is working more or less. Left turn, except for the left turn.
Yeah, residents are clamoring for grade separation solutions. And it's hard to say no.
They're, they're tremendously more expensive. Your impact fees would.
It's hard for me as a council member to say, sorry. I love you and I care about you, but I can't do that.
Yeah, ta, taxes and impact fees would. You, you know, even UDOT really hesitates to do.
For that betterment, right? Does UDOT plan like an overpass, but if they wanna go Bangater under.
Jordan has paid for that.
They pay two, like ten million per, per to do that.
And there may be things, and, and somebody telling me that it's more expensive is one thing. Somebody telling me it's this much more expensive, it will cost this much, and these are your alternatives if you want to go that route. There's a lot more information than saying, oh, well, we don't do those because they're a lot more.
We, we go into those when, when the cheaper alternatives don't work.
Well, it's, it's, what I mean is, is there's, there's, like, bigger point. There's lots of different alternatives, and this is, I'm just talking about one intersection.
Sure.
A whole city.
Sure.
Right? We're just talking about one, one of the fifty projects that are on. And, and the same holds true for all fifty. I'm not saying I wanna delve into like what every single intersection is gonna look like in the city, but. Some of the ones that impact existing people a lot more. Existing residents, especially existing residents that have come and made it a point to organize their neighborhood and come and, and have a voice, that means something. And so if I can, if I can say, look, we've explored options, if these are the options we explored, if this is why, here's the reasons. And by the way, if you did want that grade-separated interchange, these are the process we'd have to go through. We'd have to raise fees by this much or taxes by that much or bond for this much or. Let's look at what fun, funding options are out there. Maybe we can go to the state, maybe, maybe we can make a compelling case if we had the right lobbyists. To go.
And I, I don't.
You know?
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree, right? I think there's a lot there that you can do. Um, I don't feel that I've. Attually addressed your question very well, but I mean, if you talk about the grade-separated. Facilities, not only is it way more expensive, which is what I initially thought of, but it's way more impactful, right? If we do that, we're gonna have to take out neighborhoods, houses, stuff like that. And again, those are places we just don't wanna go.
I think all, all that Zach's looking for though is some specifics they can share with the residents.
Yeah.
I'm sure you guys could provide those, and it's probably not a big deal.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
And I would love to see the, the feasibility study, I mean, for example.
Right, yeah, so there's the feasibility study that looks at options, and then there was a follow-up study, um, because of, of questions from the residents. They said, well, can't we just, um, not even connect Ninetieth, right? And, and use Sixty-Fourth or swing it around and come up with anything, and so that was studied as well, right? And so there, there was a couple of different studies done to try and address these questions.
One of them ended up taking up more houses along Sixty-four hundred west than.
Oh, absolutely. They, the others were far more impactful, far more expensive, and didn't work as well. And so that's, that's why the feasibility recommended what it did. I understand that it's, it's still not the residents' favorite.
Well, it's, and it's not just, I'm not just trying, saying, you know, let's give the residents everything they want.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, provide me with the answers to these questions.
Details, it's like a.
Yeah, okay.
Well, you don't have to give the residents what they want, but we have to give them information as to why things are coming this way.
Yeah, we'll, we'll provide the, the feasibility study and the follow-up study.
That's, that's part of it is, is being able to tell them why, but it's also being able to, to, to tell them. The ideas that you're having were considered.
Yeah.
Now, your suggestion was actually in here, look. And if your suggestion's not in here, then I'm gonna come back and say, hey, why don't we look at this and this and this? Because that's the question. Like I said, I mean, I'm not that smart, I can come up with five different ways to around that intersection. I can come up with five different ways to around this intersection that all have pros and cons and, you know. Maybe they were all considered, maybe they weren't, but I'd like to know. This is a little bit of event and rant, sorry, but.
You've got a lot of questions about that intersection.
I understand, I have as well.
And let's talk about seventy-four.
Any other?
My concern is just the price tag. When I look at all of that, I just think, well, our roads are gonna be a failure for a long time. I didn't add it up, but I'm guessing it's trillions. Every page seemed to be a billion.
Not quite that, but it's, it's pretty expensive.
We should do it at Freedom Street.
That'd save us about three hundred and sixty thousand at least, so that'll add up.
It's a signal.
So the next steps, if this has been through planning commission, they gave positive recommendation. The next steps would be bring it back to council for approval. I wanna try to do that sooner than later, just so we could get the impact fees put in place, start collecting the appropriate amount of impact fees. I wanna try to do that sooner than later, just so we could get the impact we've put in place, start collecting the appropriate amount of impact we need. So if you guys don't have any further questions or concerns, that's the next steps we'll we'll take.
So I do have, I mean, I I do have one question because it's on here as an intersection project. And it was that, it was that bridge crossing seventy-eight. Seventy-seventy-eighth and. But the the bottom line is, is can we make sure that as we're doing that project? That we're improving the gateway to the city there. That's a gate, that's the gateway, right? And 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 if we're. Keeping it as, I'm gonna say this, is we're, if we're keeping the bridge as ugly as it is today. With the slag and everything else.
You have to remember that there's already one new new bridge. They had to build a new bridge on one side, so it's replacing the other bridge. There's no widening.
That was the pedestrian bridge.
Okay, so it's the river bridge.
But if we're working the the river bridge. It's still ugly. Right now, the bridge is ugly. It's got K rails stacked on top of each other. My point is that that's a gateway to the city. And one of the things that we gotta do with that. Bridge is we're bringing things into the city is that that's got to be a good gateway.
It'd be nice if people knew that Gardner Village was in.
Well, I would imagine the bridge will be the same as one on seventieth. So the, if you've driven on seventieth over the West Jordan River, it's gonna be similar.
The bridge, you go over the river. You talk about the bridge, as soon as you get over the river, right there we enter.
And I was talking about that entire area there, is that if we're putting transportation money in that area. We've got to make sure. Make the gateway, an appropriate gateway to the city. That says, welcome to West Jordan, not just say, oh, we dropped the bridge here, we're good. You see where I'm going with that?
That's a major entrance in the middle of the city.
So we want a Golden Gate Bridge.
Hey, I I agree a hundred percent. Um, the master plan identifies the projects, it doesn't identify the design or what it looks like, right? So.
But is there a way that we can put something in the master plan that says? That on certain of these projects, and it's maybe not just that one, but it's maybe one on. You know, it's the ninetieth one, and that that there are some council expectations that. This project is done in a certain way, and that's the que- that maybe that's the follow-on question is. As we adopt this master plan, are there some expectations that we put on it to say? Aesthetics, walkability, pedestrian, particularly at ninetieth and Duck Creek. Seventy-eight, seventieth and thirteenth west, whatever those cases may be. Those intersections need to have some. A highlighter taken to them, say, pay attention to those. The council thinks that 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 there are certain things about this project that are important. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Um, what do you guys talk to that?
That particular project, that'll be a joint project between West Jordan and Midville. I know they have same same concerns. And I don't think it's something that will get funded just by making an application to watch that front. Cuz they don't, they that would be probably a twenty million dollars project. Or fifteen at least.
Yeah.
So it'll probably re- require some legislative. Allocations, which we have a lot with, which being that that type of funding gives us a little more leeway. With the federal money, they're really tight on the betterments and things like that. I think it's something that we would definitely address, especially when we get doing the environmental on that. And you're looking at those kind of cultural impacts.
And I wanna make sure that in this master, that it's a master plan, right? That we include the emphasis on some of these projects that we want. And that it doesn't turn out to be like the UDOT project that says, well, we're just gonna put in the road.
So so council member Green, you're talking more so as interest is coming into the city like we discussed before, to have the aesthetics and.
Well, so so for example, and I didn't notice this on this on this intersection project by face, but I'm gonna give you another intersection. The intersection of thirty-eighth and seventy-eight is terrible. We all know that that's the one that goes into Jordan Landing that's got, okay? That intersection is a terrible intersection, but the way it comes out of Jordan Landing, the way it comes from the the car wash. Run into the fence. That intersection is terrible intersection. So my first question is, and I didn't get a chance to review that, if that if that intersection's not in the master plan. Then maybe we need to look at putting that in the master plan, cuz that's terrible intersection. It's not aligned, it shifts, it's it's a crappy intersection. But and and it it's not walkable. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't. So, yeah, I I just wanna make sure that on on some of this, that the overall objectives. As we're doing the plan is to say on gateways, on certain intersections. That we're not just focused on moving traffic through the intersection. We're looking at the appropriate. Traffic calming measures, the 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 appropriate traffic designs for appropriate crosswalks. And all of the, you know, the the sanctuary zones, whatever the heck they're called. On some of these bigger streets and those kind of things, that those are a part of the master plan is that we're looking forward to those. As part of the aesthetics of the city and not just saying, we're put, because I'm I'm gonna be blunt. And 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 Scott and I, I know we sat through the thing at ULCT a couple of years ago. Traffic engineers wanna move traffic. People want aesthetics and safety. And so what we've gotta do is make sure that the aesthetics and the safety priority is paramount. As it's moving traffic, not the fact that moving traffic is the number one priority. And then I'm never gonna be able to cross Redwood Road, or if I do, I I, you know, I take my life in. In my own hands to cross Redwood Road. That's where I wanna go. Is is be able to have the appropriate mix. So bikes and cars and people can interact at that neighbor, at that intersection. Without just saying, well, the the goal is to move traffic. You see, you know where I'm going with that?
Yeah.
Can we just add some voltage in there?
Yeah, that's.
Rest of the company, we got that expectation in the master.
That's what I'm thinking, is we had a section that talks about all those nerds, nerds hires for the city to come in. So, yeah. We'll we'll add a section on that.
It's a perfect, I mean, that's that's a perfect summary of what I'm, I guess, trying to say on Nut Ridge Way there. Nobody wants Doug Ridge Way and New Bingham to be a four-way intersection on Ninetieth. Nobody lives there, wants that. That's the most efficient way to move cars. But nobody wants that. Nobody wants that potential of people missing the turn and driving big trucks through Duck Ridge Way, right? Nobody wants that. So so exploring the alternatives. Making sure that we're not just talking about moving cars, we're talking about livability and all these other things go into transportation planes, right? Has to be, it just has to be considered. Moving cars is one thing, and moving cars is important. People complain about traffic, you hear it. But moving cars is is the main idea, but not the only idea. And we have to make sure that that's contemplated. I don't know if the transportation master plan. Is the place to contemplate that, or if the transportation master plan is a part of a set of master plans, like, I don't know, general plan or something. That uh that contemplates that. But we have to, we have to make sure that it's that it's in there, that it's.
Yeah. I think this is kind of a guiding document. Capital facilities plan and all that. So I think the the way to address it is, what you suggested is to have. You know, a section in there set dictating, hey, the city, these are priorities for the city. We wanna address these on our projects, things like that. And then as it gets to specifics, like the environmental for Ninetieth, that's where we find, identify those specifics, say, okay, what do we do here? What do we do there?
And and whether you wanna call them expectations or guiding principles or whatever. These are, these are the expectations, the guiding principles when we're implementing the master plan. That we want considered, and as when we're putting the plan together, they have, you have to check it off and say, yeah, we did consider this when we did this plan, and here's why.
Yeah, perfect.
Our council is, we understand that traffic engineers know how to move traffic. So we actually know how our communities, and so the reason we wanna see more than one idea. Even if that idea seems to move traffic the best is because we have a little bit. Deeper understanding of our residents and how our city is working. And even if this moves traffic more efficiently. And we could add some safety measures or something, and that's gonna cost more. Maybe that's an expense the council at the time will want to fund, and so we just want you to bring that to us and not just say. Here you go, sign up on it.
Sure.
We want you to say, you know, this is our recommendation. Here's some other things why we might not go with these. But. And here's how much more it would cost you. You know, you can have the Timex or the Rolex. They're both gonna tell time, but which one do you want? Ultimately, for the budget, right? For the budget, we have to be the ones that go out and say, we want, we need more of your money.
Okay, we'll 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 add that to this master plan. So we can get back with you, Seth.
Bring it to the council with that change, just for approval.
The council, I don't think we need to rework this whole thing. We've set our piece kind of and just.
Just send out the paragraph a little bit earlier.
Send out the page that you're gonna add, let us look at it with what the expectations of guiding principles are. We have a concern, we can get back with you on there.
And and there's always room for debate in the final meeting too, right?
I appreciate it, but you.
Thanks for being here and being for being the butt of all the comments.
Happy to do that.
They're not personal.
No, I understand. Thank you. I appreciate everyone's.
Thank you. We are moving to the discussion on. Active transportation master plan related to materials and collectors. Name, I have three names highlighted. Who wants to lead on this? Councilmember Bloom, Sheldon, and Whitlock.
Um, I'll start and then I'll let Kent go. And then Pamela, does that work? So this came out of our. Beginning of the year meeting. And and we talked about, you know, what do we wanna do? And this isn't tomorrow, this is long term. So just a few um some data. In twenty twenty, two point nine percent of fatalities were had a cyclist. Or eight people, and these these are Utah. What I guess what we're really looking at is that the federal government considers bikes as a vehicle. Um, but. Is that their appropriate place to have them? Is it appropriate to have them on the streets with pedestrian, uh with cars? Or isn't more appropriate to have them on wider walkways with pedestrians? And and that's kind of the discussion we wanted to have. Now, I know that some bike riders prefer to be. And Amsterdam, like. After I visited there, I thought they were always that way, but apparently it's not. They haven't always been such a bike-friendly place. It was a conscious decision that they made. When we were children, and I was a child. And I, and now that's 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 just the way they do it. And so that's that's the point of bringing this up. It's just, what do we want long-term? We know that.
So other cities are also transitioning, such as Burbank. Um, I and I was, I was just looking to see if I took a picture. I think I did, and I'll look in a second. But the way they have their sidewalks now is um. It's kind of a mixture of the road and the sidewalk, where if the bike's on the si- on the road. And then it has bike here, and you go up on those, the sidewalk, and they have the sidewalk split between the bikes and the pedestrians now. And they're moving towards that throughout the entire city to create a more bike-friendly and safer. And I was really fascinated by the changes over the years that Burbank's doing. Uh, and that what I've seen, and but you're you're right, same with Amsterdam. Amsterdam is very, very similar. They've got their roads. And they split off and do it onto the sidewalks as well, and it is lovely. I've biked all over Amsterdam, and it's just brilliant. Some look for pictures.
I have, I have not biked Amsterdam, but I did live in Germany for a little while. And they have, their bike lanes are. Are interact, well, the bike and the sidewalk lanes are are next to each other. Up where our big sidewalks are, up where our sidewalks are, is where their sidewalk and bike lanes are. I talked with some people, um specifically Paul. Uh, he said he feels more comfortable having a bike lane uh out with the traffic.
When I go down the road that has the bike lane next to the traffic, I go.
And Paul was suggesting that that he likes to stay closer to the traffic because cuz he has thin tires. Well, yeah, so. Yeah, so when when you have a, those, the buffer bike lane, the hash, the hash marks. I I'm usually riding into that. Because the further off the road, the more the breather is, they're gonna flatten my tires, and it's happened multiple times. But when we talked about the the buffer, or sorry, the the protective bike lanes. I was thinking more of like, um, you go on to, it's Cougar Bowl, or at least it's a bowl on Pro Bowl. They have one that has an actual curb. That now prevents plowing of that as well.
Yes.
And, um, you know, yeah, it's protected from traffic, but it's also protected from.
That's one thing I. California. Uh, Amsterdam. And also where I was in Germany, very little snow. Even in the peak of winter, there's very little snow. There is snow. I I remember crashing my bike once in Germany uh on just a slick of ice. Uh, and it was in the middle of the winter, but very little snow. So.
And there is, there's this. You will still have problems if you can't get in.
By keeping those separated by a curb in the winter, it's no longer, can no longer be.
Unless unless it's with the sidewalk and we're already plowing the sidewalks. We're already plowing the sidewalks.
We do plow some sidewalks.
Well, the major eventually, yeah, they're not, well.
Hell, pathway are true. And if you are delineating between actual pedestrian, aside for pedestrians and aside for cyclists. That might be better than what I've experienced as I've had riding trails when you say, hey, I'm coming up on your left. It's family, and I go every pushway. And then you slam on your brakes anyway and have to go like this and then continue on, so.
Hopefully you don't hit the kid or the dog.
Right, yeah.
And my experience with with that in in Germany was. Uh, every bicycle is required to have a bell. You just ring the bell. And then people look down, they see, oh, I'm in the bike lane. They step out of the bike lane, you're fine.
Here's my my initial thought, or just a thought to consider as we consider this, is lumping all bicyclists into one. Thing, like Mayor rides his bike to meetings, to. All over the state, to ULCT, in St. George, and he's weird, but he rides his. But he, I I wondered how I could do that. I ride my bike, I get really sweaty when I ride my bike, because I'm riding my bike for exercise. I'm riding my bike to get my heart rate up into the one forties, one fifties. You're not getting your heart rate in the one forties, one fifties when you're riding to a meeting across town or even into work, right?
It depends on how close the cars come.
That's just blood pressure, that's not heart.
That's my goal, right? So me and Paul and Josh that ride bikes to ride fast for exercise and to to stress our bodies. Is a different bike rider than Dirk who rides to a meeting, or than the little kid who's riding his bike on. To stress our bodies is a different bike rider than Dirk who rides to a meeting or than the little kid who's riding his bike on the sidewalk. At four miles an hour, you know, max, right? Um, is maybe riding next to their mom jogging on the side of the road so they can go out together as a family or whatever it is. It's, if we put all these in one bucket, we're not, you know, if we say, oh, the bikes have to go on the sidewalk. What bikes? All the bikes? Do we differentiate? Do you put? You put kids' bikes into one category, really old mission bikes into another category and then, you know, carbon frames, fast bikes into another category.
Maybe so.
Cargo bikes into another category.
And that's, e-bikes brings up, e-bikes brings up a point that I wanted to make, make is that. E-bikes are making. Cycling is more accessible to a greater portion of our population. And and then you, you get, you also can have bikes that have um. Like. Storage built into them or even like a trike, tricycle, adult tricycle style bike that has a large. Compartment for storage where people can start making grocery store trips and real trips that they would have otherwise done in a vehicle. If we have the infrastructure built properly and start to be done on bicycles and if we can. Start reducing automobile trips. By having a good bicycle infrastructure built in our city, then expanding our roads won't be. We, maybe we can s- slow the expansion of our uh, 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 of building out this, the width of our roads.
Were you suggesting limiting the right of way and increasing the width of sidewalks?
Increasing width of sidewalks on main arterials, not in neighborhoods.
I mean, yeah, obviously main arterials.
But that means that we're, that means we're reducing, that means that we either have to have greater right of way space on the artillery, arterials. Which we don't have. Or we have to acquire property or we're reducing the size of the lanes and retrofitting all of these with concrete.
Our, our sidewalks on main arterials, I believe are minimum of six feet wide already.
Um, I'd say that some of them are only at four two.
Well, that's for future build.
Is that new nineties out, there's bike lanes on the street with the people who like to turn the sheet. It's got a bike and pedestrian sidewalk which is actually wide. I think that's what they're doing right now, so that's kind of.
So we're talking retrofitting all current arterial streets or?
No. As we, as we redo like nine thousand. And as we build new, it's just. Nothing for us to consider in the models. In twenty twenty, they also, there was a, they also had data for pedestrians injured by bikes. Point three oh eight. Bike riders get injured more often by cars than pedestrians get hurt by bike riders.
So if we're doing this. I, I, I'm just trying to envision. I mean, I can see, okay, between sixty four hundred west and U one eleven on ninetieth. We, we have, we're building a new road. We can put a trail and a bike together. Anything east of there. We're, we don't have the land to, to, to fix that. And if we do fix that, that's costly as heck. Is that what we're proposing? Is that when we re, when we redo a street, we add exponential cost to it by widening the sidewalk?
It's a good question.
I mean, I get where you're going, but.
Uh, the, the, the costs are gonna be there. If. I guess the question is, are, are we willing to? Go out on a limb and say, look, if we widen a street. We're gonna invite more cars or if we widen the sidewalk and make it more pedestrian and cycle friendly. We're gonna invite more pedestrians and cyclists and so we're going out on a limb to, to, to suggest. That, that if we make that accessible, that more people will actually use it.
So let's, let's take a road that we're going to be working on here shortly. It's my favorite street. You can't guess where I'm going, but it's thirteen hundred west. We're widening that. Or we're doing whatever we're doing to, it was widening, but we'll have additional lengths, but we'll have bike. It'll have some bike lanes. Are we saying drop the bike lanes and add? That to the sidewalk and make the sidewalks bigger and? Do we have, and if that's the case. Are we, how much are we adding to the cost of thirteen hundred?
You're gonna be buying a lot more right away.
And, and would we be buying, would we be, well, would we be buying right away or would we be trading the bike lane? For sidewalk.
And, and then you're also paying for cement instead of asphalt, which would increase the cost, I'm sure. So there's certainly considerations. Is that what we're talking about here?
That's what I'm.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the, the, the. The flip side of this coin is, you know, we've been talking about Amsterdam, Germany and, and Burbank that you brought up. Lower, low, much lower snow bowl. And, and the plowing and winter use is a strong consideration. We have to know, we have to decide if, if it really, if those models fit our city, given our climate.
So just to be devil's advocate. That's on, we're, let's, let's just hypothetically say thirteen hundred west that runs. In front of all of these houses. Now the houses have an extra three or four feet of sidewalk in front of their house that. Each resident has to clean the snow off of.
Well, and also, you're right, and the snow load off the road too. That's where all of it's get pushed.
Can I stop real quick? Hasn't thirteen with already been designed?
It's thirteen west, hundred west phase twos, what? Sixty percent or more than I, it's, it's, it's really close.
I'm just using thirteen hundred west.
Sure, sure. I'm just saying, you gotta realize if we're, if we're gonna widen sidewalks out on new construction.
It pushes it and you don't change the right of way, so you don't acquire property. Then it puts the snow plows closer to the sidewalk and it throws more street snow up onto the sidewalk. And then you're fighting that as much as you are.
Residents have more to clear off and. I like the ideas. I, we're open to, but we just need to.
That's why we're talking about it. We're trying to figure out, one, is this feasible? Two, what's? The pros, cons, negatives, and three, we clearly all wanna figure out how to make our city. Less reliant on the roads because our roads are only gonna get worse.
Yep.
But to Nestor's point, I gotta have that shoulder too. You gotta have the shoulder on the road so you can do. Work in the flat tire.
But we have a shoulder plus a bike lane right now on, on most new build, right? So we could just eliminate the bike lane. And.
Shoulder is the bike lane.
Well, on Road Lake Ninety South on the west side of the city, it's, you got a bike lane, a four or five foot wide bike lane and a shoulder.
And our roads are twelve feet, each lane is twelve feet wide and. I don't know that twelve feet, I could be, I could be up in the night here, so I apologize if I'm. Idiot by saying this, but I don't believe our roads need to be twelve feet wide.
That's the ash toe. That's the, that's the ash toe and everything standard. Is that all roads are built, built to the same width so that we don't have issues. Isn't that right?
We're encouraging speeding on those wider, wide roads. I mean, if.
Trucks are up to eight feet wide and not, not just semi trucks, but trucks are, you know, Ford F three fifty, whatever. They can be up to eight feet wide before you need an oversight. Eight feet only gives you a two feet on each side. To text.
Yeah, you're, you're not inaccurate there, Zach. Maybe the width of our roads encourages texting.
Yeah, so I need to, because I agree's point about uh, what's gonna happen thirteen hundred west, right now when I ride home. Um, I don't use redwood. Until I'm in Buffalo. Yeah, now I did once.
Um.
Except they want you to use redwood out by Camp Williams.
Yeah, it's fine there because it's got, I think there's plenty of roof, so I was running late and I thought. The route I usually take, I'm gonna try to just see if I could. Ride up Redwood. I lasted until like a hundred and twenty sixth and then I got off the sidewalk and I was hating myself. For the rest of the ride in because. That's not where my bike is built to ride. It's like this and I've, I've avoided these. Guys, boxes that have frames on them built into the sidewalk and uh, cars are, you know. Have blind spots trying to exit out of certain areas and. It was horrible. So the route I take, I go up through the park here. At twenty second, right back to hundred and fourteen. Then I actually go west to twenty seven, take that all the way to a hundred and fiftieth. And then I get, go take that to bluff, there's, uh, to Redwood and then all the way. So. Um, you know, we do have issues like Redwood Road, which again, if you wanna have a, even a bike lane on that road. You're talking a lot of. Property acquisition, probably never gonna happen. But if there's other alternatives, I could say that. For instance, thirteenth, once that's done, I'm probably not gonna take that route I've been taking.
As we build new neighborhoods, as we build new artilleries to think of like. More pathway stuff where we can have more of the bikes and whatnot. It doesn't have to necessarily also be on these main roads, but.
So.
Yeah, it's just off.
I, I'm not going to disagree with this. But. Let's just hypothetically say that you're building a new neighborhood, Jones Ranch. We'll use that or.
Terrain.
Terrain. Whoever the hell else is building up there. We're asking now for an additional. Six or eight feet of land for a thousand feet. So we're adding.
Not inside the neighborhood. I don't think, I don't think we're talking about doing that inside of a neighborhood.
Okay, so then you're. But you're still talking about a land acquisition cost. Somebody's gonna have to acquire the land. And that land is costly. Does that, does that increase? If, if it's, if it's not, if it's in a, if it's being footed by a developer. They're gonna go to the boys and girls on the hill and say, look what Wes Jordan just did. They just increased our costs exponentially. Because they want wider sidewalks. If not. We're gonna have to come up with the ex, the, the, the extra money to pay for the additional. Um. Property acquisition that could be six or eight feet along, you know.
I, I think maybe two or three feet, because our sidewalks on these, on the roads we're talking about. Our sidewalks are already required to be a minimum of six feet wide. So. I don't think we're talking that much. But I know, I think you're making a valid point. I, I'm, I'm just not sure how much impact it's really gonna have. Because our, our plan is already saying. So maybe Nestor, you could.
Let me ask you this question. You and Nate can answer this question. With, are there standard cross sections that UDOT requires for streets to be? And are we deviating from that? And if we deviated from that, what would be the process?
Yeah, it would be very difficult. Um, an exception from UDOT, let's say they, uh. The standard requires a six foot wide sidewalk and we decided to create a shared path that could go up to twelve or fourteen feet wide. Uh, remember the, the, the size of the shoulder is about two feet. So it is required four feet minimum for two people to walk next to each other or for two people to cross each other. Now, if we're talking about a shared path, where we're gonna have. Four feet in one direction, four feet in the opposite direction and minimum six feet for bikers. Separated lane. You're going to. All of the sides alone. And it'd be extremely difficult to get UDOT. To say, yes, we're gonna move the shoulder from a state road. Into the. I call it the, the, the zone, the pedestrian zone. Remember, the, the sidewalk is not only intended for pedestrian, we share with people with disabilities. And anybody that is riding a bike without keeping a low speed. Will create a conflict, will create a, a collision and technically in the police department, the right way belongs to the pedestrian. The bike is the one that gets started. And. Before I left Park City, um, there was a great push for allowing e-bikes on trails. And the entire city was very excited because e-bikes were only allowed on city roads. Well, a year went by. And then the accidents created by the e-bikes are going to a faster speed than a regular bike. With people that are walking their dogs with a three or four foot leash. Those frequent accidents created a division in the entire community. Where half of the city is endorsing the e-bikes on trails and half of the city are saying get rid of them. Because they're too dangerous. They belong on the roads. So I, I, I think the, the discussion probably requires some more time and a frame. Um, when I see a frame, I need to walk you through the different components of a road. Uh, the sidewalk is a component of the street and that's an asked definition. So we need to take care of the safety for the pedestrian who's the main user. Within the sidewalk, we have the curb, the concrete curb. We have the park strip. The sidewalk and the front, the, the setback. The setback dimension depends on the zoning. If we have a residential zone, it could be twenty feet. If we have a commercial zone, it could be zero. Like the downtowns. The, the sidewalk could be a minimum of five feet, desirable six. Then we comply with ADA for our residential zone. But in a commercial zone where we are expecting a high level. Volume of pedestrians like. Redwood Road, we could probably go eight or ten feet wide. But the park street is the, the furniture area. Where we have mailboxes, uh, street signs, traffic signs, we have light bulbs. So what are we compromising here? Are we compromising the width of the park strip? At the expense of moving all of this furniture to the back of the wall. Drivers may not be able to see the size clearly. Or are we expanding the right of way to the point that we need to acquire new homes or? So that's the, 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 the discussion. Now, if we go back to the curb, you were saying. Can we narrow the, the lanes? Of course we can. Then we can have a shoulder, are we moving the curb? Moving the curb, we have uh, catch bases designed to capture the stormy runoff that will also need to be. So there is a fiscal impact on retrofitting anything that is in place, without a doubt. Moving forward, it'll be a matter of having a discussion. What is the vision of the council and the engineering firm? Um, I always say that I have somebody watching over me from heaven because. I get these ideas at the right time. A week ago, we met with Mayor Burton and WFRC. In which they informed us that we have funding for a couple of studies. For trails and bike lanes that will, application was submitted by Bill Branowski before he left. And then they got approved. Now they say who's gonna take it up as well. But they also show us, um. An electronic map, a GIS map, we trails for the original master plan. And the week before, Clint Hatching updated our active transportation map. This is how things are happening. Two weeks ago, I got a GIS map. And then the following week I got access to WFRC map and they didn't match. And then I contacted UDOT because for instance, EU one eleven has a master plan trail. From UDOT, that's not shown on our map or WFRC. And to complicate things more, Solay County has another regional trail and bike lane map. So.
It doesn't match ours or UDOT's.
So it doesn't match any. So before this meeting, I invited. Uh, UDOT, WFRC and. And, 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 and Solay County to meet here at city hall, so we can draw a map and start creating loops.
What also needs to be in this conversation is cyclists. The local cyclist community should be involved in this conversation if we're gonna talk about expanding more cycling.
That's exactly right. That's, that's the goal. I mean, we need first of all, create a map. And then start creating a priority map. Nate was talking, well, we, if we wanna address the council, we gotta have a priority. What is? What, what, what is gonna be our criteria? What is the vision? Well, in Draper, where I used to work, we, we started creating loops. One thing that came out of, uh, uh, out of that map that we have right now. One thing that came out of, uh, uh, out of that map that we have right now is there's no trailheads. So if I decide, if I'm not a professional biker like, like the mayor is, but I want to do some exercise. And I want to drive to a trailhead, park my car and just go two miles to start me up my exercise. I don't have those, the center points. So the, this is something that happened a couple of days ago. We just kind of ate in circles for trailheads. So we can apply for funding to the local WFRC and those applications are very likely get funded. Because it's just a parking lot and that invites active transportation, invites viewers. And then I come to this meeting and I, I see trail at the bottom list with a negative six. And then how the neighborhood, how the neighbor feels that they are no part of the community. It's thus, it is one thing that I have to say about Park City is those trails gather the neighbors to walk together. That's the thing. That's the beauty of those trails and bike lanes. So this year, we have a hundred thousand dollars allocated by the council for, for active transportation. And we're gonna start strapping buffer bike lane, creating our first loop. We're thinking fifty-six, seventy-eight, forty-eight, then ninety. UDOT is on board with buffer bike lanes, something that never happened before. It's like a month ago, UDOT contacted me and they said, this section of ninety that is under construction. Was not designed to have a buffer bike lane. But what is our standards? Well, we're moving into buffer bike lanes, so we invite bikers. Yeah, going with buffer bike lanes.
Buffer has a curb separated just.
Just painted, just. When I say buffer, it's this stripe, this stripe um shoulder with a forty-five meter. And they're gonna extend it from Redwood Road all the way to Bangor. And, and that's how things are moving.
Um, so the, the, the other, the other comment that I have is that. We looked at the ma- active transportation master plan before Bill left. There were thirty projects on it. We prioritized the projects and then Bill came along and told some other people, well, priorities don't matter. We'll just do what we had already. I heard that in the meeting. Um, which was extremely disappointing. But my question is, have we looked at that active transportation master plan? Because there were some projects that only required a few dollars. We're talking about limited money. That would connect a pro- that would connect trails. And, and it seems to me that some of those priorities are all, some of those are also should be. Honestly, I, I'm thinking that a couple of those, because they may be connecting communities. May be a higher priority than striping some bike lanes on some of the streets. So what I'm asking for you to do is look at the priority on the active transportation master plan. And sees if there are some of these minor projects that we can't get just get done. So that people can say, hey, we, we did some pro- because it just seems like it's been stalled. The last two or three years and it's just kind of sat there that, you know what, let's make some progress. Let's connect some of these trails. Let's connect a couple, some of these neighborhoods. Let's, let, let's get some of these projects done. So that maybe it will help fix some of this problem.
Brilliant. Also, also Councilmember Green, there's in the parks master plan, the most recent master plan, there's a. Trail connectivity, connectivity app in there too. So it's all, it's already laid out.
So let me, let me just tell you, this is my, we need to sync those and get them coordinated. Let me, let me tell you a story about an email that we got the other day. That Councilmember White, Whitlock was not kind enough to respond to. But we had a resident who said. We're supposed to have this approved tree list for park strips. And the approved tree list for the park strips doesn't match the approved residential tree list. That the planning department has for landscaping. Which is basically what Brianna said, is that there were some discrepancies in these two tree lists. And so what I'm asking is that if there's something to do with the parks, with trail connectivity. What I'm asking you is to make sure that it's consistent with your plan. And with the county plan and with the state plan. And that we're not got people doing two different things. And then when we get there. We've got the, the road that connects to each other like this.
Right, exactly. And, and, and even going a, a step farther. What, what, what came out of, out of the meeting with WFRC is, I mentioned the, 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 the trail, the shared path. There's gonna be a fourteen-foot wide for pedestrians to go in both directions and bikers outside. Outside the road. So it's gonna be also a great corridor, great idea. But it's not in anywhere, anybody's map. So UDOT is formatted this way. They have their planning department. Complex at Region Two that had right away. So when we send a developer to get a permit from UDOT. The Region Two Right Away Department approves the, the permit, but hasn't talked to planning. So it's up to us to step up and tell the developer, by the way, you got, until you got. By the way, you have a trail master plan along EU one eleven. So that's why we invited Jeff to pay. He's the planning department director. So we can blend in all of this master plan into one version that will be housed by WFRC. And from here on, we're gonna work on connectivity. Those little sections of trail, those we're gonna connect those. And we're gonna start creating mini loops and those will extend to bigger loops and create that uh invitation to neighbors. For neighbors to just go on, go on a walk with their, with their dollars and just remember what we do.
And I don't have a problem generally. If I did in my. I'm gonna say get in my Blackhawk helicopter, go to, to ten thousand AGL. I don't have a general problem with talking about sidewalk widths and. Fourteen-foot lanes and some of those kind of things as concept. I, I'm, I'm a little concerned about where rubber meets the road, but uh. Literally, uh, but the, the, the fact of the matter is, in concept. As we're, and, and I think, aren't you working on some design standards? That if you're working on design standards, maybe there are some things that we can incorporate into design standards. With these wider roads. And including some traffic calming measures and intersections and those kind of things. And we, we have a more comprehensive design standard that the council buys off on. If, if we have those, I'm, I'm good with going that direction. Um, I, I'm, you know, I just wanna make sure that what, when we, when, when. We execute that, that it's not costing the taxpayers. Or the res- the residents know what it's going to impact them. What it's gonna cost us, what it's gonna cost the developer, and that it doesn't throw up red flags that. Somehow we're increasing, increasing the cost of housing, so.
I think something we need to keep an eye on is going back to a point long ago, which was Zach's um about. Cyclists and which ones we're going to do and what we're going to say is going on because I have biked in Amsterdam as well. And there are no people Zack biking along those same things in Amsterdam. And the reason Amsterdam works so well, and it took them decades to get it to work so well. Is that it's a more community like this. Where West Jordan, where we just saw a big thing about the reason people like West Jordan is because we're close to everything, which means. We're a much more of an automobile-based area. So it's something we need to think about. So we need to get with the cyclists, as Councilmember Bloom said, uh, that we need to do that and see what they want. Because right now, if you built bigger, um, you know, bigger sidewalks and said, bicycles, bicycles are here. You're still gonna have a ton of people on the streets going, doing what they wanna do. And enforcement's not going to happen because we just saw enforcement is also way down below, but.
And that's police.
I know, but I just throwing that out there. But we're looking at everything. Park City, that's another enclosed community. Burbank, I've been there many times. Most of the people bike there. Are working in that area and that's why they're doing it. So we can't treat, I, I'm just gonna be honest here. I don't think we can treat West Jordan. Like closed communities like Park City, Amsterdam, these other little cities that are just set to do that. I would love it. I would purpose, personally love to see more biking and that. But right now, West Jordan is not that. So it would be a leap of faith. One, I'm not saying I'm not willing to take, but we'd have to look. Look at in the new communities and see where it makes sense. I love the idea of being able to bike to the grocery store. Instead of jumping in my car. But that's about the only thing that I would really see other than the exercise biking. And the exercise biking, I can't see trying to go forty miles an hour on a sidewalk.
That's shared with.
I want people to be able to jump on their bike and run down to the Maverick and get their donuts and slurpees. But ironic, no?
But yeah, I'm just saying that, that I love, I love the idea of where the future would be. But if we're gonna do this as a council now, we just saw a huge thing of all the money we're gonna spend to try to get roads built. And, and that's because our people have told us they need to get from. You know, east to west, or I mean, you know, and so we gotta figure it out, but. So what we have to do is, it with the biking community, we need to figure out who would be a part of this and figure out what it is. Uh, again, cause even looking at a lot of these photos here, the chat is pulled up, it's just families bark, you know, or, or people biking to work. And that kind of stuff. And that's not the typical way.
One thing I've seen with Amsterdam is everybody has bikes and everybody's biking.
Yeah.
So.
There's thousands of same bikes until you've been to Tokyo.
Yeah, no, but it's.
Before.
And Thailand.
And even when I took my bike to go to the police and firemen baseball game. Would you think would have been an easy ride over there? It was like this to get there. That shouldn't have to happen.
The main goals of the master plan is right away participation.
Yeah.
And for active transportation, it's more critical than transportation because for trails, we cannot use eminent domain.
Yeah.
If we have a, a trail that goes from here to here, one neighbor says no. We can't use eminent domain to connect the trail. For roads, we can't, we can't condemn them. But when it's related to trail, then.
I agree with them.
So that's, we are just beginning to grow.
This is a good conversation because we, we can keep this in mind as we continue moving forward.
Ironically, this article I looked up says, how can we make London as bike-friendly as Amsterdam? So even London's looking into it. And London is more.
London is very more walkable.
With everything that, that Bob just said, bumps him up, all, all the points I wanted to make really well, with one, I have one more. And that is the way that Amsterdam, London, Germany are taxed. Versus how West Jordan is taxed. It's night and day. And then you throw in Burbank and well, we don't know what people wanna say about Utah becoming like California. So. Um, you know, they, they have a, a larger, a, a smaller. Need as far as global miles are concerned, right? And then a larger budget to deal with that than we do because of the way they tax, you know, with the value added tax and the other taxes in Europe has.
Netherlands.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
I, I think it's a valuable goal and I think when we, when we get our downtown right and get that dialed in, I think having a. Biocentric infrastructure around the downtown will be.
Right. I do like building walkable.
Should definitely be in there.
Yep. And, and for new construction, I don't see that it's going to be exponentially more expensive to do some of these ideas.
I agree.
Uh, for, for retrofitting, yeah.
Except it'll be a little bit, uh, my only concern is with new construction, it'll be a little bit like, there's a section on seventy-eight hundred south out west. Between uh sixty-fourth and sixty-two hundred west or sixtieth west. Where seventy-eighth has been widened on the south side because development went in and there's a bike lane. You can't get to that bike lane from any other bike lane. It's between a, a quarter of a roundabout built on one end that forces you back into the road. And uh, once a bucket's house slash farm that sticks way out into the seventy-eight. And there's, but there's a bike lane in between. Nobody rides a bike on it.
Can't get it.
Can't get there from here. So we put it on the new streets. And then you can just go from what's on that new street to what's on that new street.
And we assume that bicyclists are allowed to use a lane of, of, of traffic in, in actually. Drive on the road when they have to and.
They're considered a vehicle.
I'd say that it is accessible, but it's, it doesn't feel safe.
And I have ridden on it, but I, I.
Feel safe to walk down.
The other.
Sure, I feel safe driving it, but definitely not.
There's one more thing, if, if we can, I'd like to bring up with the active transportation plan and that is uh pedestrian safety. Um, I'd like to see with, especially as school crosswalks, where we have a curb bump out. And then maybe an island curve, like an island uh safety zone in the middle of the, of the road. Yes, yeah, over there, they have that. Um, so. Creating uh crosswalks where pedestrians can have, can feel more safe. It's gonna make it easier for, say, somebody in, in my neighborhood, I live west, sorry, I live east of forty-eight hundred west. And for years, I've never allowed my kids to go to the library, cause they'd have to cross forty-eight hundred west. To get there without a crossing guard. Uh.
Well, you live with crossing guard, just said.
Yeah, my wife has a crossing guard there, right? To send her with. So increasing safety on crossings is important to me.
I, I agree with, and that's why I'm, that's why I'm suggesting to, to Nestor and to Nate. That, and, and you've heard me push for traffic safety measures. Um, in new designs. And I think that what we have done. And, and, and it goes back to the old issue, the old issue, traffic engineers wanna push traffic. And safety is, that, you know, safety is not necess- that, the, the way safety is done. It's not as high a concern as the movie. But what we've gotta do with our designs is that we've got to get. The bulbs, the, the sanctuaries in the middle. We've gotta have maybe the raised crosswalk or the uh textured crosswalk that. Not really MUTCD, but if it's marked, then it is, dumbest damn thing I've ever heard in my life, but okay. Uh, you can, you, you, you can't put a textured crosswalk in. It doesn't count as crosswalk till you paint it. So, okay. Don't, don't get me going on that. Uh, but what we got to, we do have to incur, we. And those have to be built in to the new neighborhoods. Adding traffic calming measures, and everybody thinks that the only. And Mayor, you know where I'm going with this. Everybody thinks that putting in traffic tables is the way to solve traffic problems and it's not. And, and we all hate, and, 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 and in fact, that's, it's one of the most cost-effective. But it's one of the crappiest ways to slow down traffic, right? And so what we've gotta do, what we've gotta do, and I agree with you a hundred percent. Is what we've gotta do is with our traffic design standards, we've gotta put mid-block crosswalks in. Because what happens when you put a mid-block crosswalk in with a little sanctuary in the middle?
Slow down.
And people slow down. And so that, we've gotta do those things as part of our typical design. In neighborhoods so that we get traffic slowed down, so we stop getting the complaints from Lexington. From that one over by Itineris that we've been to and some of the others. We build the traffic calming measures. In, we're gonna be better.
I would like to address, you, you're, you're, you're right about schools, school zone and safety. Last year, we collected traffic data on all the schools. And then last year's summer, we analyzed. Compliance with the MUTCD for school zone safety. We found four schools. That were correctly done when the development was built. But development keeps moving to the west, so traffic volume is increasing to the point that those. School zone safety regulations were not in compliance anymore. So we found four schools that had to be retrofitted and upgraded to meet the, the new standards. This year, we did the same thing and we're adding seven. This year, we did the same thing, and we're adding seven new crossing guards to our network, Mayor, not we we. We went to every school and every school principal with our data. And we updated the school zone safety plan for every single school in West Jordan. Last year, the Children's School District reported they had the safest school opening week in their history. Last year, and we're trying to do the same thing this year. And you're absolutely right about speeding. People have this mind that speed bumps are the the only and best solution. But traffic data is showing that people speed up in between bumps. They decelerate before the bump go over and then they accelerate. And I set up the counter at different locations in the middle of the speed bumps, and they can go forty, forty-one miles per hour on a twenty-five. Uh, Jordan Middle School, we have a pedestrian crosswalk, a school pedestrian crosswalk in the middle of two speed bumps, forty miles per hour, they send out. So when Miss Salavannah was complaining about speeding, she was right. But last year, we got fifty-six percent, almost six out of ten drivers speeding five to ten miles over the posted speed limit. By teaming up with the police department and collecting traffic data and sharing that information weekly with the police department, the time of the day, the location, and the amount of speeding taking place, we're able to reduce it to twenty-four percent. So we went down from six out of ten drivers, two out of ten drivers, two point five, almost three. The national average is eighteen, two out of ten drivers. So we are going in the right direction. It's just, it just takes some time and some, I think, safety is maybe is concerned. The crash rate is three point one six compared to other cities, they are really high. There's a number of factors. We are a city under construction. Traffic is going from nine fifteen all the way to the west. We are construction workers, the temporary traffic that eventually will go away until we, we are gonna find a balance. Until then, we, there's a lot that we can do. We're doing forensic analysis for each intersection where we have a high crash rate. And for instance, fortieth and seventy-eight, we were able to reduce the number of accidents by simply resetting the the green cycles for the signal and changing the striping. We went down to six, we got seven to eight accidents per year.
My wife.
So so there are, so we we are doing a number of things that could take all day. We are including the planning department on our trail, mass planning, because you're on the land, relevant process, we can reserve the right away. And then come back later with the funding from W F C or the city and build these trails to connect neighborhoods. So we, I think, uh, there's a lot that we are doing, but I agree. Mayor worked, he made it clear, school safety is the number one priority. And the police department has zero tolerance for anybody speeding over twenty miles an hour in a school zone. And we have spent all our budget last year on improving the 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 traffic center of school zones. And we're doing it again this year.
To to caveat on what Nestor is saying is um, the active transportation plan will not be successful if pedestrians and cyclists do not feel safe. And so I I appreciate that. And so when they feel safe, when when a ten-year-old, when you feel safe allowing your ten-year-old to to go up to the the community library on their own, then you know you've got a good safety plan in in place. And um, up to this point, now I no longer have a ten-year-old, but up to this point, I have not felt safe allowing my ten-year-old child to transport themselves to the the local library. That's really uh, probably less, well, maybe slightly more than a quarter mile from my home.
Yeah, but when they're fourteen, it's okay.
Yes, yeah.
And when they're fourteen, they're invincible.
Weird to just think, I was just thinking about when I was ten, I would get up and I would bike like three miles to something. And we'd never had anything.
You know, it's funny is when I, when I was twelve.
I just still think about that.
When I was twelve or thirteen, we'd ride from my house in Midvale over to Fashion Place Mall, watch movies all the time.
I used to stop all the time, anyway. Times have changed.
They have, and well, there's a lot more traffic on our roads now than there used to be as well, right? So maybe our parents, maybe back in the time where parents felt more safe.
Is there any further uh, uh, not discussion, but direction or in something like, should we just kind of keep this in the back of our minds as we start to review development standards and things and that? What what's your, what's your preferred path forward sponsors of this?
Well, that is a given, absolutely. It's gonna be in the back of my mind for anything future and in the back of my mind for anything that we have an opportunity to see and improve upon, but this is a priority of ours that we want build the future of our city to make sure we're pedestrian and bike friendly. So then six years from now, those people living here.
Wow, look at all the bikes in West Jordan.
Have a little bike friendly and a safer way to go.
Pulling up on people maps.
No, because there'll be something new that we don't even know about.
Comes out on their arm.
Maybe, maybe it'll just be in their glasses. They won't even need. But we do need to get cyclists involved in the conversation.
Yep.
That is a given.
And figure out which cyclist.
Think outside the box. Remember in Park City, when I suggested, let's have, let's have benches, it was so bad. It was crazy, no, but by adding benches and a drinking fountain as specific locations, you, more people walking, not everybody's. Their preference, but everybody has a level of problem for walking and those benches and children, little things like that really give us friend to kind of use in the tracks.
Let us consider that horse well and truly beat. And uh, move on. Thank you for your attention, that discussion. Sorry, time is up. The next, next item on our agenda. So succinct, we can make a discussion concerning senior housing overlay zoning and other overlay zoning event procedures.
Not Larry. Um, this is a.
He's recovered from knee surgery.
My other brother.
Oh, this is the other.
Yeah, this is, this is uh. The council discussed this topic about the process to remove senior housing overlay, so this is just responding back to the council with some sample code to hear your feedback. If you're comfortable with what's being presented or have some changes, uh, we can bring it back to a council meeting for adoption, but this is just a return of what you had asked the staff to do.
I just have one question. If I thought we discussed, um, if it would go back to the zone that it was, and I don't see anything about that in here.
Soon they have to.
Moving back.
Yeah.
If if it's.
Did you include anything about that?
Yeah. So when you apply an overlay on top of a piece of property, it already has the existing zoning on. So you're you're right. If if they apply for for R three eight with an S H O on top, if you remove the S H O, you'd have the field that would be R three eight or whatever.
Still there.
It's still there.
So so we're saying, what you're saying with that, that really quickly, just the practical effect of that is we should not consider a zoning with a senior housing overlay as one application, we should consider it as two. Because let's just say it's an R one ten and we, and they're applying for R three eight with the senior housing overlay, and we say, okay, we'll take R three with the senior housing overlay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's too separate, because the, if senior housing overlay is removed, you sound the R three eight, so do we, that's, I think that's the point that Kim is making is, is we gotta consider if we want R three eight first, and then we can consider if we want.
Agreed, I I agreed. And and so here's the question, as we're talking about philosophical senior housing.
I'm allowed to get to your presentation.
The the senior, with senior housing overlay is an exception to the captain or the balanced housing ordinance, correct?
So here's the question, which directly ties into what council member. Of course, they care. I just, I didn't want to be informal.
It's a work of social nature.
Should we actually, in fact, if somebody wanted an overlay, why would we even consider the rezone? Why not just leave the zone the way it is? And put the overlay on it? Then if the overlay goes belly up for some reason, the underlying zone never changed. You see where I'm going with that?
That's fair.
And so what I'm wondering is, I I didn't have any problems with most of the wording on this, but I'm wondering is if after just hearing what Zach said, uh, sorry, Councilmember Jacob.
Yeah, I just called her Kayla a minute ago.
Calling Love See.
If if we couldn't add a line in here that we don't consider a rezone and an overlay, all we do is consider the overlay. And that's the zoning act.
Yeah, that's fine. Then you wouldn't have to worry about it being being kind of a lame duck, you know, what do you do with it? They're stuck.
Just, just, I, we'll, we'll use the real world example, right? Liberty Homes, that Gary Cannon's development, that was originally an R one ten, that was an R one eight neighborhood, I remember. It was an R one something neighborhood. We converted it to an R three six, put the senior housing overlay on it, then they built some houses and we took it off. But if if when Gary came to us the first time and said, I wanna take the senior housing overlay off, think how clean that would have been to say, you're right, we'll take the senior housing overlay, huh, just build the R one eight that's there. And if you don't like the R one eight, rezone it to what you, what it, you think it ought to be. And I think that becomes cleaner.
Well, when I have a quick, sorry, Councilmember Green, I have a question on that. Or try, um, how does that work for the, and this is just not rhetorical, I'm just curious. How does that work um, with property that's already been built? And now it's non-conforming. I mean, obviously, we can't ask him to tear it down.
Well, but if you'll notice, this ordinance says that if it's been sold or done something to make the property non-conforming, we can't take off the overlay and make it worse. So.
If it's built or or sold off, parceled off.
You're stuck.
You're stuck.
So the only way that this, so the perfect example of this, that this ordinance works is when Peterson's had that senior housing overlay up on fifty-four ninety. They 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 got that entitlement with the senior housing overlay, they hadn't developed the property yet. They came back to us and said, we don't want the senior housing overlay. The property at that point was still an R three something. But that one, they said, okay, but if we would have just put the senior housing overlay on that, then if they said, we don't want the senior housing overlay, we would have taken it off and it would have reverted back to the neighborhood that they would have built the same number of houses on anyway. So that works, and what it does, what it would then stop is people selling off the land and then saying, because, you know, I don't think it's gonna happen, but just think about, there is a development in West Jordan, two blocks north of Liberty Homes that is a senior housing overlay, and they haven't sold all the lots yet, but it's been subdivided. So this disordinance, the way it's written, correct me if I'm wrong, would prevent Somerset Village from coming and saying, we can't sell the last four or five houses in the neighborhood. We can't, we we wanna take the senior housing overlay off, and we would say uh, because it's already been developed and sold off and subdivided as senior housing overlay, you're stuck and you have to keep it.
Line seventeen.
The fact of language is that they can't submit an application or can't accept an application.
I like, see, I like.
So that just is a perfect stone wall right there.
Yep. But if I've learned anything in the past four plus six years, we can always change zones.
Well, don't mean they won't ask.
I mean, it's, we can set it still, but.
And you're right, you still have the flexibility, but what I like, what Larry and Duncan have done with this ordinance, if you go down to line let's see, starting line eighty-five through ninety-seven. When there there's criteria in the code that the commissioners and the council consider when there's any sort of zone change. In addition to the standard five that you've got, starting on line seventy-four, there's, there's additional, uh, there's an additional four criteria that when you're removing this, the senior housing overlay or any overlay, it's just more, more tests, more criteria that they've got to prove to the council, to the commission, that. Why?
And this is what we want. This is exactly what we wanted, yeah. Yeah, I found it to be what we wanted aside from, I think we had a discussion of what happens to the.
Well, and I think if we just.
Yeah, if we do what.
If we do what Councilmember Jacob suggested, we just leave the underlying zone the way it is, and the overlay is the zoning change. And then if they wanna take the overlay off, we have it. Then it leaves it with the underlying zone, and then they would have to meet the zoning requirements to change that. And that is, would put them through the process of justifying the new zoning change.
Yeah, like a.
So with the. This this is baked enough to take it officially through the commission and back to the council.
Yes.
You'll have that.
You can add those. Yeah, I know.
So just to clarify, what you're saying is if someone comes in to have senior housing overlay designation, it's something to make that zone, the overlay zone change, that they have to bring that by itself, not with an underlying zone change, with just the overlay by itself.
That's exactly right.
They can bring an underlying zone change, that has to stand on its own.
That has to stand on its own.
That's right.
So it would actually be, if they wanna do that, it would actually be two actions by the council. I'm, it would be where we're rezoning, and they could, you could do it the same night, right? But it's not one action.
Just like the M D A and the zone change.
Yes.
No difference.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you for your work on that.
That's the practical result of of what happens.
Yeah, swivel through it.
Cool. Well, that wasn't too long.
Oh, I bet you two are happy. You're like, oh, my goodness, they're talking so much.
Oh, hang on, there's one more. Keep them the, uh, next item here is discussion of policy related to West Jordan City Code Title fourteen subdivision regulations Title fifty processing regarding changes to the subdivision development review process to comply with House Bill four seventy-six. They have assigned this to Mr. Taylor Jensen.
House Bill four seventy-six.
All right, um, yes, these are just some, thank you, Chair and Council, and they've had a long meeting, so I'll try not to take too much of your time. So these are code amendments relating to changes to a state ordinance, uh, House Bill four seventy-six. Oh. Uh, so the petitioner on this is the city of West Jordan. Among the changes that were required with House four seventy-six are we can't require construction drawings or engineered plans at both preliminary and final subdivision, have to be a choice. Uh, we also have to respond to preliminary or initial reviews within fifteen days, final submissions within twenty days. And we can do no more than four total review sets, uh, combined preliminary and final. So if we do three reviews on the preliminary, you'll get one final review, so.
We can actually do four final.
Oh, it's been clarified.
Been clarified, yeah. It was ambiguous.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, four total on the final.
Yeah, four, five.
Okay. That's.
I I have a question on that first.
Yeah.
Um, may not require subdivision improvement plans to be submitted at both preliminary and final. But if they submit them at preliminary, let's just say we require them at preliminary and don't require them final, but if they submit them at preliminary and there's changes that need to be made, they're then required to come back with changes, right? Or no?
Maybe clarify the difference between the land use regulation review and the subdivision plan review, which is.
Yeah.
Really awesome.
Yeah, so um, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we've decided we're going to require those at the final. So the preliminary will come in, it will be effectively a zoning check to see if they need the. So the preliminary will come in, it will be effectively a zoning check, see if they need the zoning, if their loss sizes layout. Meet the intent of that zoning ordinance, but nothing's going to be engineered. So they'll do all that engineering at the final stage, and if they need to fix it or update it because the engineering reports. Reveal that something needs to be updated, that's on them to fix. Now, they could, if they wanted to, we're not requiring it, but preliminary, they could say. You know, we have enough questions that we're choosing to, uh, submit engineering plans at this point, that's fine, they can do that, we can do them at that.
It's just not required.
Now, there will be some. There's definitely nuance involved here, uh, we're, we're. We're talking code today, uh, ordinance today. As companion documents to this, there's a lot of administrative checklists and manuals that internally we're, we're refining. Um, we do need to make sure the, the commission who reviews these preliminary subdivisions, as you know. Need to know that it, it actually works in the real world, like, we've got to have some grading plans that make sure that. And, and road connectivity and things like that, so there's some engineering involvement, but not the detail. Anyway.
So I have a question, on the RCA and up here, you have days, like fifteen business days. But when I look at the code, I don't see any of those, why is that?
Because we just default to the development manual and to state code, assuming that. The state government could change those, we don't want to.
Something in here, please, that says. That you'll comply with state code or whatever dates, something.
Yes.
Because that's the whole point of these changes is the time, so I'd like our code to. Alert someone reading our code that there are deadlines, that. So I don't know how you want to put it in there, but I'd like to see something that alludes to that you're following. State code for the deadlines or whatever.
We, we, we do reference our development, uh, our development manual that has the very specific dates, but you're right, we've been, I don't know if it has the state. Code references.
I just didn't see anything.
Just say do it's not. State code.
Yeah, example.
Yeah, we're no references in specific section, I don't think you have to, I don't think you have.
I just think it, that. If you have a new employee that reads this. And they weren't along for the journey. I want them to be alerted that, oh, I better pay attention.
Alright, so if I understand it correctly, then what you're saying is not specific sections, but reference the state code in general. Uh, to alert staff, developers, whoever, that they've also got to write the state code, my bank.
Yeah.
And I think we do briefly mention that my notes were between lines two ninety and three oh five.
Well, maybe I didn't see it by the time I got to two ninety.
And so really, that comes in at ninety to three oh five is all straight.
Yep.
Yeah. So I didn't read that.
Oh, no, sorry, three oh eight to three forty five.
Oh, that's. No, that's.
Three oh eight, most of that is struck as well.
Yes, three twenty four and three twenty five.
Hey, look at that, that's not straight through, that's under.
Yeah, and that's, so we probably, that's a good place to insert it, straight right there, I think. Straight up, if we're referring to the, our own development processes manual checklist, we can also refer there to the state code.
Yeah, if not good.
That would be easy cross off, and we'll insert it on a couple of strikes. Then don't strike it out.
Three strikes and it's out? There's a lot more than three strikeouts.
The other changes that we made is a few other that modernize, uh. The code to bring it up to date, like, we don't need copies of paper plans now, we don't need paper plans. And I think everywhere we changed it from owner or app, or owner or developer to applicant.
Yeah.
Uh, we do require owners to still sign all applications, so I would feel like that was more consistent, and then, um. One other change was. Recorded by the city recorders designated, rather than the city recorder, because normally it's the planners that go to record. So it's not the city reporters, want to make sure that, when doing that, it's not running a spell of code. Um, is it? That part right there, that one, that one right there.
Yellow, yellow part.
The yellow part, so my question with HB four seventy six. Is there were a couple of. So I'm gonna ask. Specifically, it amend, it amended that it said municipality may require the seller. Of a newly constructed residence to inform the first buyer. Of the municipal ordinance requiring water wise landscaping, are we gonna put that in our?
It's lines eighty four through eighty six.
So I missed that.
Yeah, and so what it is, is we're saying for new development, that each final plat. Include this language, which basically says, yeah, that refers to the water wise landscaping. Our city code sections that mention that.
So that will be all purchases, not just stuff for.
And the advantage is if it's right on the plat, then it gives notice to the whole.
Yeah.
How to do it, so of course, yeah.
So the, and then the other question that I had was. Somewhere in the, in the massive bill. It talked about. The city couldn't prohibit. From placing a building inside the rear setback. Does that affect our, as far as I recall, that doesn't affect us, does it?
No, it was not a full building, it was like, uh, landings and, and some.
Yes, it, it, yeah, define this.
Things and things like that, we already allow for those exceptions, those encroachments.
So we didn't have to modify.
Yeah, we were ahead of the game on that one.
That's what I was thinking, but I wasn't sure, so, okay.
Bay windows, things like.
You know, I, I haven't completely memorized Title thirteen and Title fourteen.
Big lower floor window wells.
I got your homework, man.
Come on, Kelly, this is funny.
Sign tells you whether one or two things, one, we don't expect you to read it, and two, look how much yellow we've done, how much we're striking through. Comparison with.
Well, yeah, I think Councilmember Green will like all this language that's described, especially on the last.
I like that in different colors.
We, we wiped out a lot of words on this. So with these amendments, uh, and, and refinements, are we okay to, to move forward? We do have a November first deadline that this law goes into effect, so.
So.
So we're bringing it to you now, just to have the discussion and go through the planning commission, I haven't proven by October.
And, and this is something that if I recall. And, and this is great, but just for future reference, uh, in our legislative drafting guide. And I think these guys have. Additions are one color, deletions are another color.
Uh, we've, we've talked and worked, yeah, we're, we're getting there.
So, cool.
Thank you, appreciate it. You get some of the hour.
Okay. We have one more quick, uh, quick.
Brian O'Neal.
One more item to talk about, actually.
Oh, it's the.
This is the longest meeting you've got.
Can you go to the next one?
But you hang in there with me just for about thirty more seconds.
Yes.
I'm gonna drive home safely.
You want to continue conversation, there's a hallway. Thanks for being here, guys, thank you for the discussion. Um, Alan.
So, right now, we're scheduled for council meetings on Wednesday, August fourteenth, and Wednesday, August twenty eighth. Uh, the county will only do truth and taxation on a Tuesday, because that's when most city councils meet. And so to not conflict with other agencies. So we have a truth and taxation scheduled on the thirteenth, and a city council on the fourteenth. That city council meeting will have, um, the approval of the final budget. After the tax, depending on what you decide with the tax increase on the thirteenth. Some of you are interested in having the council meeting following the truth and taxation, others. Would like to keep it this way, so the question number one is. You want to have, it's gonna be two separate meetings, so. Do you want to keep them separate like this, or combine them on the thirteenth, and I need four of you to tell.
How much do we have on the fourteenth besides that one thing?
Right now, I think it's that and one other, I think it's a light meeting.
I like them separated because I feel like when you. Take public input and then you vote on it right away, that that's not really taking in their input because you didn't.
It's like it's a done deal.
I don't, yeah.
All the time.
And no, not as much as we used to.
So I just need from the seven of you. How many would like to have a separate meeting, one on the thirteenth, one on the fourteenth?
I'd prefer they be.
Well, on the, on the separate, that. The truth and taxation will have a public forum, and then we'll have another one on the fourteenth as well.
It, it doesn't have to be on the fourteenth, it doesn't have to be another public. Another public hearing where we hear.
But you will have public confidence.
I just don't think we're gonna change our minds in twenty four hours, we've been looking at this budget for six months.
No, it's already allowed you to do is, if there's on Tuesday, that something happens on Tuesday, the thirteenth. Look.
And what is it, like, what's gonna happen?
So let's, let's just say.
What did, tell them, what's gonna happen?
Devil's advocate is that right now we're proposing a three point five percent pay tax increase, right?
Okay.
What happens if the council decides that, uh, three point five is not where we want to go, but it's three? What that would do is that it would give the staff enough time. To modify the paperwork and get it all right. To do that so that we pass what we're talking about. On Wednesday, as opposed to saying that's what we want, pass it. And then it's not in writing. Because it has to be in writing for us to approve it.
The question is, is twenty four hours enough time?
We're gonna do that, we might as well move it to the next week, so they have enough time.
And you have to do August thirty first, right, to actually.
It has to be done by the thirty first, um, so.
So if there was changes, we can push it to the.
Right, but, but that is, that, that's the risk, right? The ri, the risk is if residents come and say, we don't want three and a half percent, the council says, let's go two point five. Would, the staff needs to calculate how you're gonna reduce the budget.
How about, how about this? How about this for a compromise, for a compromise plan, what's the other item on the fourteenth that we have scheduled for?
Um, let me.
By the way, I might add something too.
I'd like to just state that I agree with Councilmember Whitelock that. If for no other reasons, it's optics. We don't want, we don't want the public to feel like there's being slam dunk after they've given their.
I have an idea for this.
I, I stand corrected, this would, right now, this is the only item is approving.
Okay, cool, let's. Then let's not have a meeting on the fourteenth and put approving the budget on the twentieth. Except I don't want to have a meeting on the twenty eighth. If the chamber gala is gonna be here.
Looks like there's an arrow, isn't it?
That's another topic, that's the.
That's the second topic, you want to, you want to just do both together and figure out when you want to meet? So the twenty eighth, the chamber gala is that night, and for the first time in their history. They're holding it in West Jordan at the Veridian. Um, so there is, and, and when I talked to, uh, Ms. Riddle, the, the CEO, she is very, uh, sorry that she didn't plan to book it, but it's dealing with when Veridian's open and. Other little things like that, um, she said she didn't realize we had a meeting that week, she thought we were doing it on the week before, so.
What time is the gala start?
Five thirty. So the question on the twenty eighth is simply, and right now I have nothing on the twenty eighth either, so August right now, I, other than approving the budget, that's all I've got. So you can either move it to the twenty seventh, we wouldn't conflict with, uh, planning commission. If you wanted to meet then, right now I don't have any topics. Or we cancel it, or keep it as it is, you do the, the meeting and then go to the gala late, but you'll, you'll miss a big chunk of it, because it starts at five thirty.
I'd rather move city council.
Move city council.
And if we move city council to the twenty seventh and planning commission is in here too.
You're not meeting on it.
So I don't mean on twenty seventh.
Just said we can.
Well, we don't, we don't conflict, so. My commission is the first and third week. So what I'm hearing, a suggestion is. Um, what I'm hearing a suggestion is cancel the meeting on the fourteenth, do the thirteenth truth and taxation, and have a meeting on the twenty seventh.
Yes, to approve the budget, and whatever else might happen.
But can we please ask if we're doing that, that communications send out information? We'll catch up.
Sure.
He'll, he'll say it again.
So the, literally what we're doing is, is we're canceling, if, if we do what I'm hearing, to sum this up. We're canceling the Wednesday, the fourteenth meeting, and we're rescheduling the twenty eighth.
The twenty seventh.
Yes. And so in all, in all essence, we're just moving the twenty eighth to the twenty seventh, and we're just canceling.
Yeah, correct, and how, what will happen is we will cancel those regularly scheduled meetings that are already calendared with the annual meeting calendar. And the meeting on the twenty seventh will be the special city council meeting, and that takes care of everything with, uh, the state.
Resolution or ordinance or anything to make calendar. Is there any opposition to that plan? I like that plan.
You have that. Okay.
And I think that should be, by the way, modus operandi going forward, not moving around the gala, but. With truth and taxation and improving the budget, just separate them by week, not by day, but by week.
That's fine.
I think that's.
That's why I wanted to bring it.
Alan, I wanted to ask you before we adjourn real quick, have you talked with Denise, pursuant to what we talked about in leadership last week? About the, the sustainability stuff, resolution for the.
I talked to her briefly, but she's off, so I haven't.
Oh.
I haven't gotten them all completed, yeah.
Okay, let me, let me just say, say what I told her, just for the benefit of this room, this is kind of a. Council comments section, if you will, um. Denise and I were talking before the meeting last week in here, we were eating, um, about. Their desire to, before we issued the park bond that's coming up. They want to go out and get rerated by the ratings agencies. Um, because we haven't been rated since before Denise got here, and I think we, well, those of us who've been here longer than Denise know. What a difference we're in now than we were before.
Sounds like it's an idea.
Our city finances have changed. One of the rating agencies, Fitch, uses an E S G score. Now, say what you will about E S G, it's good, bad, or otherwise, fact is they use it. Okay, um, E S G stands for environment. So they want to see things that are good for the environment in your city policies, we have the water wise landscaping standards, for example, that, that will do good for us. Uh, so if you just decide to torpedo on renewable energy, so that might not look so good. So my thought with Denise, that I bounced off Denise, and she really liked the idea in our little conversation, but it hasn't gotten official yet. Is what if we put together just a resolution of the council? With three or four or five sustainability goals that we have as a council, now we'd have to do it pretty quick, because they want to shop the bond by October, they want to get done before the election. So. Because who knows what's gonna happen with interest rates and things, depending on who gets elected, yada, yada. Um. So, some of the things we talked about were. You know, like new parks, and when we redo parks, similar to your sidewalk discussion. Is we, you know, our goal is in parks to eliminate nonfunctional turf that's watered for no reason, just to have great spots. Can I just ask the question of the city attorney, can we be having this discussion? I'm just, I'm informing you, we're not having a discussion, I'm just telling you what I'm thinking, and I want you guys just to think about it, we'll have the discussion another time. I just have everybody in one room, it's still an open meeting, it's my comment, it's my. Well, it's not on the agenda, so. So anyway, just something to keep in mind. You want to finish?
Yeah.
All right, I'll send you an email. With the, maybe a draft resolution or something. All right. The meeting's over, the debt is done, we're good.
Thank you.